Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the work session of Monday, January twenty fourth, twenty twenty-two at nine thirty AM. Let's start with pledge.
Pledge.
United States of America.
And to the Republic.
One nation.
Indesible.
Justice.
Okay, at this time, I would like to ask Secretary Treasurer William Pell the fourth to call the roll.
Scott, President Scott Hawitz.
I am here.
Edwin Warner Junior.
Present.
Ann Wacko.
Here.
Bill Parrish.
Present.
And myself, Bill Pell, I'm here.
All right.
We are, yeah, we have a qual.
All right, we have a quorum, thank you very much. Uh, welcome, everybody. Uh, we do have some discussions. We do have a very busy day today, so I'm gonna try and keep us on track as best as I possibly can. Uh, Bill, I see that you have a discussion on uh regarding the Lake Agawam Conservancy and plantings.
Yes, um, Charles, you see them there? Hey, Charles? Hey, Charles, you there?
I am here.
You see them, they, yeah.
They're coming in.
Okay. They want to talk about the rain garden down there, but doing some maintenance on it? I'll let them um talk about it. Yeah, put his attention.
Megan's on now, Bill, if you wanted to.
Okay. Megan, do you want to start off, or you have someone else who wants wants to start and talk about it?
Thank you. Um, hi, everybody. I'm Megan Adashie Magyar. Um, I'm a member of the community and I'm also a member of the Lake Agawam Conservancy Board. And um, I just wanted to thank you so much for partnering with us to make the South Shore Bioas well in the um parking lot at the south end of the lake. It has been a huge success, um, I think, both from an environmental and a public perspective. Um, and I, it's met all of our hopes in terms of partnering with you as we restore Lake Agawam. And so I can't thank you enough for helping us create that and maintain it. Um, we've gotten so many compliments from the community about how beautiful it is, but also from an environmental perspective, it's done exactly what we hoped, which is if you go down there now when it rains, you see how the rainwater cascades around the plant bottoms and it's absorbed into their roots. So that cleanses the road runoff before it hits the lake, which was the hope. Um, and we have a lot of beautiful native plants in there and they're flowering all in all four seasons. So it's really been a great success and we can't thank you enough for letting us use that space um to help clean the lake. And I just wanted to offer, we have an stewardship agreement that um we'd love to present to Sean and for your review. We would be more than happy, the Board of the Conservancy, to cover the costs of maintenance going forward. As a naturalist garden, it should be very minimal, the costs, because the whole point is the native plants should maintain themselves, especially as they become, um, as they grow in more, and they would need less irrigation going forward because it is supposed to be mainly irrigated by rainwater. But we would be more than happy to cover those costs um going forward as the board and to free up, you know, some of your funds for other um projects in that area. And one question I had is if you would ever consider trying to repair that meridian paver um that's in the parking lot? Because it is falling apart and crumbling. And there was a really interesting article by the Friends of Georgia Capon Executive Director last week about the importance of using different kinds of pavers on surfaces throughout the villages that were more porous and would allow rainwater to seep in instead of just cascading down into the water bodies. And I thought when I read that article that that would be an amazing place to try a different kind of paver, a more porous paver, something pervious or slabs. Um, so I I wondered if that was something you would all consider. It would be, it is in need of repair regardless of whether you did a porous paver, but it would be an amazing place to try doing a porous paper.
I I would certainly consider that. I I I think I would like to continue this conversation with uh Assistant Town Attorney Sean Cambridge relative to the stewardship agreement. And I and I certainly think it would be a good idea to take a look at this uh this crumbling paver area to see what's a uh, you know, a more environmental uh complementary to the area solution. So uh, let's, let's set up a time where we could uh address both of these issues and uh let the board do a little due diligence and uh and uh, you know, we'll see what we can do.
And Megan, I put my email information in the group chat. If you want to send me a draft agreement, I'm happy to look at it.
Yes, I will do that. And then please let us know whatever changes you'd like us to make.
Absolutely. And and I would say if each of the board members gets a little time to take a run through the area and and get some thoughts together and then uh, you know, I know, Bill, I know you work very closely with this group. Maybe we'll get some suggestions on um appropriate materials for the area.
One thing you have to be very aware of moving forward is that uh Sandy and Irene both overwashed that area and there was a a substantial amount of seawater that was put on there. So whatever papers or material that you do use in this area has to be secured. They can't just be laid in by hand and put on on sand. So it it has to be a well-thought-out uh process because it could potentially just all wa- literally wash away. And also with the plantings moving forward in that area, you ha- should be very cognizant of the uh saltwater and the marine environment and the overwash that what we use there. I think that's really important.
They're supposed to be resistant to stormwater. That's why most of them were chosen. They were chosen particularly to be resilient in the face of salt spray.
Yeah, that's, well, salt stay and salt inundation because there was like three feet of water there. So that's much, much uh different and a little bit of salt spray. But uh, the the whole project is working out wonderfully in a partnership with anybody uh as far as the trustees is is usually a good thing because it allows us to free up funds. As you can see, the guardrail, the wooden guardrails that were originally put there are in uh extreme need of replacements. So that's, that's a very costly project. So not utilizing our money to maintain the garden, we can put it to that part of the uh park, which is good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just want to say thank you for stepping up the conservative and doing that. It's a it's a wonderful thing down there and I hope to see the new tenant in the Osprey Nest in another five to six weeks.
You think six weeks?
Beginning of March, middle of March.
Right, Ed?
Yep, Mar- usually around March tenth they appear.
Yeah.
That's been such a great addition. I can't thank you enough for choosing that spot. It's so beautiful.
Yes, so we hope we have a peer there. Um.
Eagle Scout Project?
Yeah.
Yeah, which is great.
I sent Jessica the information on the pavers from, uh, maybe she can send it to the rest of the board members later today. She has time. Um, I think it's a wonderful idea to we repair the center island. Of that, it's been falling apart and we had some complaints from the village about fixing it. We did fix it a little bit here and there. So I think it'd be uh a good project to go forward and look at with the other trustees and take some of the money what we maintain the rain garden for to put, fix the garden, like Ed said, and also stop fixing the the center island with a project. Because that that parking lot does bring in a sum of money, which, you know, we will realize.
Yeah, and you know, you want to take care of the trustee assets as well. You don't want to have things that are crumbling and falling apart. You you want to have good assets that people can enjoy and appreciate. And then it's a good project for the trustees to collaborate on and make some good decisions on is excellent points that were brought up here. And I'm sure there'll be more excellent points brought up as we work our way through the process and as as Sean Cambridge also dots his i's and crosses his t's, I'm I'm sure we'll uh we'll move further along. So I appreciate you coming in and addressing the board.
Thank you very much for inviting me. I really appreciated the chance to chat about this and thank you again for this garden. It is my favorite thing that we, the Conservancy, have done and I hope to plant many more, but your leadership allowed us to start this process. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Megan.
You're welcome.
Bye, thank you.
Bye. Hey, Sean?
Yep, I'm on here.
Um, is it possible that you can just send her just a list of things you you would need in the uh proposal?
Uh, they have a draft agreement they usually would send to us. Um, so I'll look through it. I'll redline it if there's anything that has to be changed. Um, I'll review that with the board, um, and then we'll move from there.
All right.
Okay, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
You'd like to do that, or if you want to do a uh a bid for that?
Excuse me, Sean?
Uh, on the pavers, we can talk about whether you'd like the marine maintenance staff to take on that project, or if that's something we need to go to bid for.
Uh, we would probably have to go to bid for that.
Okay, that's a problem. We can handle that.
I think it's, I think it's more specialized. You know what? Each of the trustees can go down there and take a look.
Yes.
And we we can move forward after that.
You gotta give a feel for the uh for the landscape down there. It's, it's a big project.
Yeah, and plus we need, probably need an engineer to design it.
Perfect. Okay, so we can all work on that together.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Let's collaborate on that. All right, moving on to the next discussion, I have Trustee Warner with discussion about seventy-two Far Pond, Shinnecock Hills uh sand maintenance agreement.
Yes, I uh, Charles, is uh Mr. Steve Malkinson on the uh today? Because I had Jessica send him the uh link for the meeting.
He's coming in now.
Okay.
Uh, I'm here. Can uh, can you guys hear me?
Yes, hear you, but we can't see you.
Oh, oh, okay, hang on. Uh, there we go. All right.
Now we see you.
Yeah. Um, Mr. Malkinson, we're in the process of uh discussing the same maintenance agreement that you had agreed to sign during the whole application process. Um, I went to the office actually two weeks ago and it was told to me that you had never signed it. I thought after our meeting with uh our attorney Sean and myself, and I believe Scott, we went over all the uh, you know, issues and tried to resolve them. And I thought that it was a a good to go. Um, now it's been brought to our attention that it hasn't been signed. The rocks are getting exposed, uh, the beaches somewhat washed away. The filter cloth that was under the rocks is uh now blowing in the breeze and it doesn't look very nice at low tide. And uh, through the whole process uh of this, you know, involving the community and many uh, you know, very bright minds, we uh listed uh, you know, Rob Young and a couple other you know, coastal experts to uh, you know, do this project and that would have the most benefit for the public and for yourself, protecting your property, the road end, and you know, basically the whole uh channel that was Far Pond uh that's dredged and you know, it's it's a whole ecosystem that's involved. Um, you know, it's, it's, to me, it's very aggravating that we did all of this work and took all of this time to enlist all the uh, you know, user groups and you you're not, you know, going to uh sign this agreement. I don't think it's uh, you know, very uh proper.
Okay, uh, well, I appreciate uh, you know, being admitted to the meeting. Uh, so let me be clear uh right off the bat, I'm happy to sign a uh sand maintenance agreement. I know that is part of of the entire process here. Uh, I do recall that you, myself, uh, Eric Schultz and Sean Cambridge met back in August discussing a number of the provisions in the agreement. And I thought that we uh came to uh an agreement on several of the provisions. Uh, I I have some issues with some of the um some of the text, but also some issues with some of the uh, some, some content-related issues. And I thought we had resolved some and the only um, and then we we made the agreement that uh, you know, the uh, the new agreement, edited agreement would be forwarded to me, forwarded to me for signature. And any copies of the agreement that I have received did not include what I thought were issues that we had agreed to change. And I'm happy to uh, you know, discuss those uh uh today. Um, so should I, you know, should we, should we speak about them, or is that the way to proceed here?
Sean, what would be the best way to do this? Do you want to have a meeting before we get into this in the public discussion, or do you want to just discuss it?
You may have kind of a fundamental difference of uh what this agreement entails. Um, I can share my screen and show the picture of Trustee Warner here. Um, just sort of, can everybody see what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, um, so it was the board's understanding that this whole structure would be covered with sand, from what I understand. Mr. Malkinson's indicating he's agreeing to put sand on his side of the revetment. Is that right?
Well, let me make, the revetment is on trustee property. It's on the Shinnecock Beach Road, the whole project. So when we permitted this, it was our understanding for uh the structure and for purpose of, you know, access to be for the public to walk and to, you know, get around there at certain tides, that it would be, the sand would be placed there. And we have done two projects, beach scraping and placing sand further out from this project.
I I would say also, it was my understanding that it was going to be covered in sand. And I I think that each of the board members, you know, you you could have what your own understanding is, but in general, it was the entire thing that was supposed to be covered in sand. Um, not just from the, that portion landward, but all of it. That was my understanding.
What, and that would be done once a year. Uh, there would be a uh basically a review of the project um with some outside entity that would determine the amount of material and how to place it. Uh, either Mr. Malkinson would pay for it, or, you know, uh, we would have, you know, uh, James Dury in our office go down and do that. But as it stands right now, the rocks are, there's eight or ten feet of the rocks exposed, all the filter fabric is exposed. So it it, it's not a very nice looking, you know, uh, the visual aspect of it is not very nice looking. And, you know, we we agreed to do our part of it yearly, which I think is, you know, scraping the beach and building even a, in a bigger more sand in front of the rocks and what Mr. Malkson uh is supposed to take care of. So it's, you know, it's a partnership between us and uh Mr. Malkinson. To, you know, to keep somewhat of a beach here, I understand and realize that, you know, the sea level rise and, you know, the the fetch of the waves that come from the Atlantic Ocean sometimes do, you know, interface with this. And it is a difficult situation, but I mean, it's something that we worked on and I thought we had an agreement of a meeting of the minds during that meeting.
Well, can I, can I, if I can address this, uh uh, that that is, you know, my understanding of the agreement, and I I believe Jim Walker's as well, is that it it is these um rocks, uh as permitted, only uh a rise above mean high tide, something like eighteen inches. Uh, there is no possibility, the only, the, they cannot, you know, absent the maintenance of a, of a significant beach out there, such as was created when the trustees uh uh moved some of the standover, as they've done twice in the last couple of years from the spit that extends westward toward Far Pond, where where they've rebuilt a beach that was thirty feet wide or so, plus or minus, which in each case that that has been done has lasted six to eight months. And it's literally only in the last month or so that that last margin, as it gradually erodes away, that that last margin uh seaward of the rocks is eroded and the rocks become exposed. There, there is no possibility, there is nothing I can do to, to, I can cover the rocks with sand, but without that significant beach created, that I don't have the capacity to create, the sand would wash away within four or five days. So it would no longer cover the top of the rocks, that that just, there's not enough of a margin from where I am permitted to build the rocks and the, the, the elevation above mean high tide, that the sand can possibly stay there. The first day that there's a windy day, any, you know, the water will splash over the rocks and wash the sand away. So this, this, uh, these rocks can only really be effective, if you will, as a um as a protection of last resort against the western boundary of my property and the southern boundary of Far Pond Road, at least three quarters of the way across, unless that major beach is maintained. I can't maintain, I don't have the regulatory authority nor the, I mean, the amount of, if I were to truck sand in front of the rocks, that would be sufficient to you know, given where the channel is now, that would be sufficient to keep those rocks covered and a beach present there. I don't even know what that, I I mean, that would cost tens of thousands of dollars a year. I don't even know how that could be done, nor do I know that I have the regulatory authority to do that, given the highway department and all the other uh uh regulatory authorities involved. My understanding was always that I would be responsible for the sand behind the rocks, between the rocks and the property, or the rocks and the road. I don't see how I can possibly uh keep, maintain a beach there. Uh, um, th- there's only sufficient sand that comes, as the trustees have have discussed on on numerous occasions, if we're going to create a sustainable solution to this problem, it involves moving the dredge spoils, which uh uh have been placed east of the house. Uh, and the land uh on the spit going into Far Pond until that channel is relocated, that that sand needs to be plowed over uh toward the road end and west of the property, as it has been done the last couple of years, in order to create that beach. I I don't see how there's ever any understanding that I have either the the financial, I mean, to bring that sand in from elsewhere would cost many tens of thousands of dollars. Uh, and I, I, I mean, I was never under the impression that I had the obligation to do that. So I I think there's a fundamental misunderstanding here. And and frankly, this is.
How many cubic yards are we talking about to cover those, those uh, those rocks?
Oh, if I may, uh, the permit condition is for the consultant to work on this to prepare a report annually. Uh, your office does not receive that report. Uh, and this permit is coming due for expiration. It needs to be renewed, just so the board has that uh piece of information out there.
Hey, Sean?
Yes.
Um, what was the original agreement we have with him when we issued this permit?
Uh, there was a special condition of a sand maintenance agreement. Um, I did meet with Mr. Malkinson, uh, President Schultz at the time and Trustee Warner. Um, by the time Mr. Malkinson had left for the day, we were all in agreement that this was the agreement that the rocks would be covered, from what I understand. Um, and James Dury, I forwarded Mr. Malkinson a clean copy of that agreement uh later that day. Um, and it was not returned to the office.
So, and he was issued a permit without him doing that?
It was issued a permit ahead of time. Um, I had advised the board that we should lock in the special conditions um at that time, but I believe you had wanted to start on this project because it was pretty urgent. Um, so you had all agreed at the time that we would hash out the sand maintenance agreement after the fact.
Yeah. Can I just finish? Can I just finish, please?
Sure, sure.
Uh, so Sean, so what's the next step legally? Um, okay, he did not sign it, did not return it. We let him do it. So the permit comes due soon. What do we do? We nigg on the permit?
Uh, well, it's going to expire actually on its own.
It expires.
It needs to file for renewal of this permit, which he's not yet done. Um, and the board has to make decisions whether this permit and this revetment will stay in place moving forward.
All right, because I don't want to like, I don't want to make, waste a lot of time going back and forth that he said that, she said that, he said that, the consultant said that. The job has to get done. Okay, the environment is suffering down there. The neighborhood is suffering. And, you know, that's what I want to know. Maybe we should continue this in executive session if it's going to be a legal act?
We could discuss it. Um, you are, as a board, the regulatory authority with jurisdiction over this most immediately. Um, so this is your permit. Uh, you you don't have to get into agreements with people. This is your property. This is your jurisdiction. Uh, this board needs to make a decision uh for this area.
It it sounds like to me that if move right now, uh, would be to renew the application for this permit, right? To get it renewed, uh, to get a consultant, whether it's Jim Walker or Inna Science, to go down there, look at the site, come up with the amount of material that needs to be placed there and then present that with the uh, you know, with the app, you know, review of the uh renewal application. So that way we know how much material has to be moved and specific dates and we can get it signed.
Time out.
Ed?
Time out. Time out.
Yep. Go ahead, President.
I don't have a gavel. Look, hold on a second here. It seems like it was obvious to me anyway that those stones were supposed to be covered. All right, and we have agreed, and I think there's a schedule to be moving dredge spoil sand. Am I, am I correct in that?
Yes, Monday of next week, Chesterfield is going to be doing two projects down there.
At at the trustee's expense. Right?
Right.
So this is Mr. Malkinson's project, his application. I mean, if you want to renew this thing and continue on, there has to be some clar- in my, my opinion, there's got to be clarification here. I don't, I don't see putting more expense on the trust other than what we're already engaging in relative to this. It's clear, there needs to be, in my opinion, a partnership here of a sand maintenance. You've, you've got these stone revetment to protect your property and your property value. But that can't be, at my opinion, at the expense of the public or expense of 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 property that's owned and held by the trust for the public. And I don't think it's unreasonable to request, and and I don't know where these numbers are coming from, about the costs that you are um that you're thinking about. What is the actual length, time, what is the cubic yardage and how many dump trucks of washed sand need to come in there? Acceptable material to cover that. And then that work with the material that the trustees are going to move over from the dredge spoil, the the combination of the two actions uh consistently occurring to protect our property, the public's access and 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 you're getting the side benefit of protecting your property and everything else down there. So I I thought it was a a collaboration of everybody and an understanding. And now it seems like it's shifting off to more expense uh to the trust and and more, more of a detriment to the public's uh land. So I may, my, my missing something here, the other board members?
Mr. Chairman, could I, if I could address that? Um, so uh, I I do think that we, we, we have a bit of a misunderstanding here, but, but but beyond that, I have on several occasions, and I believe Eric Schultz and I, I know could attest to this, and I think Ed was there on one or two occasions, where I have offered uh at my expense to plow uh the sand, uh significant portions of the sand on the spit, which uh um extends out toward the channel uh into Far Pond, over toward the road end and adjacent to the rocks to, you know, create that beach. And I was told uh by uh Eric Schultz that, no, I can't do that. It would look bad for two reasons. No, uh, it's number one, I could do it less expensively than, he told me I could do it less expensively than trustees because the trustees are bound by, uh, you know, I don't know, union regulations and certain things about whom they can contract with. But he said, secondly, um, it would look bad because it would, because it would look as though something was being done for my benefit and this would have to come from the trustees. So I have actually offered to pay um to have some of that sand move o- moved over, which I cannot do on my own. I would need the authorization. My understanding is, not only of the trustees, but also that that the State Department of Environmental Conservation has some jurisdiction over that sand. So I am not unwilling to do that a- as, and and bear the expense of some of that. I've been told in the past, I I have neither the authority nor the ability to do so. So.
Why is it that, why is it that it would be an issue for you to bring in fresh washed appropriate compatible sand and maintain coverage over the tops of of those boulders so that it's not seen? Why, why, if you're going to spend the money in the one direction, why is it that you can't comply with what the board was requesting as terms and conditions of the contract and keep those rocks, you know, as as Trustee Warner was saying, covered with the sand? I don't think that the expense of bringing the sand in is as much as you, you're anticipating here.
I I I disagree, and I'll tell you why. I think to bring in fresh sand, which, 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 first of all, is is kind of crazy in the sense that uh it it would um I mean, Ed, you would know, how, about how many cubic yards of sand was, was, was pushed over, you know, last June from that spit, and it's gone, right?
Hundred and fifty.
And, and-
Two hundred.
Two hundred cubic yards?
Probably around that, yes.
All right, so if I were to truck in 200 cubic yards, it would last, you know, five months or something of that nature. Now, 200 cubic yards, I don't even, I mean, I, I don't know what 200 cubic, I mean, it would, it would be substantially over $10,000, I, I, I would think. And secondly, it'd be gone in five months, and that's the way it will always be until or unless there is a more permanent, you know, comprehensive plan to address the issue with the channel. So, I mean, it would, you know, I'd be spending, you know, tens of thousands of dollars every year to, you know, dump sand in front of the rocks, which would have rode away.
But we're not asking you to move 200 cubic yards. We're move, we're, at Monday, we're going to move that sand that has filled back into Far Pond, push it back there. So on top of what sand we're going to move, we're asking you to cover the rocks that, that are not covered from our project.
I, I'd be happy to, I'm happy to do that. But my point is, it's until you do that, it would be pointless for me to do this, because if I did it tomorrow, it would be gone by Monday, you know, or by, by next Monday. Once that beach is reestablished, if I need to dump some more sand to cover the rocks, I'm happy to do that.
But so, so my understanding, my understanding is, we're going to move this Monday. You could have your consultant, which I think was InterScience, Mr. Walker, right?
It was in the past, yeah.
It was in the past. So whoever can make a determination of the amount of cubic yardage that's required to cover those rocks as per the special condition in the permit, make that determination-
On top of our material.
On top of what the trustees are going to be moving out of the, out of the county dredge project. Combine the two, and at least, in, in my opinion, you're, you're, you're in compliance with the understanding of the special conditions that the trustees put in the permit, and you're at least giving the public the benefit of the doubt of getting the rocks covered up, more sand, which ends up being sacrificial, combined with what, what we're going to move to protect the trustee property and ultimately helps out the whole area. But it's got to be a collaboration of the two. We're not asking you to do the whole thing.
I'm on board, 100%. So to be clear, I am happy to do that. But, but the, this agreement doesn't really reflect that. There's, there's sort of a conditioned precedent. In other words, if the trust, if the, if the fundamental beach is not built in front, then for me to cover the sand alone is, is a pointless activity. I am absolutely, let me be clear, 100% happy to follow, to, to meet my obligation there. But, but it's meaningless without the trustees having rebuilt the beach in front. So I don't think that-
For it, Mr. Malkinson, that was the special condition, that you had an engineer, architect, or consultant report submitted by January 1st of each year. The trustees meet next February 7th. As their counsel, I'd like to see you submit that report pretty promptly. The next meeting is February 7th, the following is March 7th. So if, if we can get that report in hand, it'd be greatly appreciated, the trustees-
And I think the report should entail how much material needs to be placed there. Let the consultant go down there, whether it's 50, 100, 200, whatever the amount is. That way, when the maintenance agreement, the sand maintenance agreement is signed, we know the parameters of which you are responsible for.
And, and that has to be done in this timely fashion, especially since we're going to be taking it to, you know, on our own here, to be moving that material and spreading it out there. You want it to be a holistic approach to this. So both actions need to be done in a reasonable amount of time. We know we're battling Mother Nature here, but we're trying to do the best that we possibly can, which is going to require expediency in, in getting this taken care of.
Well, I, I, I'm in, I'm in full agreement with this. My concern is this document as written does not reflect entirely what we've been talking about. And that's why the document, you know, I haven't signed it. So I am happy to, so this is news to me. So on Monday, Ed, the, the, you know, that you guys have hired stuff to move sand over similarly to, okay, great. Then, then I will, what I would like, under the current circumstances, given the multiple moving parts, and apparently some confusion and, and miscommunication, if we could extend that February 7th by a couple of weeks, there's, there's, there's movement going on here. I mean, let's, next Monday is January 30th. You're going to move some sand in. I will then, when that's completed, do my part to cover the rocks, happy to do that. But given the moving, and then, you know, submit the, you know, submit the report as required. And I'm happy to do all of that, but I think that with, given all those moving parts, to have that all done by February 7th, you know, is going to be tricky. So if we could get a special, you know, agreement to extend it a month this time, so we could then address what's in this sand maintenance agreement, so it really properly reflects what we've been talking about today, I would appreciate that.
Sean, the technical aspect of it would be, it'd be best to renew the permit. That way we have an active permit to work upon and not let it expire.
Yes, renewal has to be filed with the applicable fee. And any requirements that the environmental analyst says are required for your renewal. So sometimes that's an updated survey, sometimes that's updated plans. As the initial permit is not in compliance right now, as far as the office is concerned, they're going to want to see the initial report for the sand maintenance document, assigned agreement. You know, we're going to want to see those conditions met before the renewal is issued, obviously.
But we need to get the renewal on the pipeline.
Correct. That's the first step, is file the application.
Okay, so that's on me to file the application?
And then, Mr. Malk, yes. And then, when do you anticipate being back in town so that we could meet with myself, Scott, or, and Sean, and maybe Jim Walker, and hash out this final agreement on the sand maintenance?
Well, let's see, so you guys are, you're starting the project on January, I mean, I wasn't planning on being back till the middle of February, but I will accelerate my return if necessary. This is a priority. But let me just get the timing right. So you're going to start on Ju, January 30th, correct?
Monday, weather permitting, yes.
Okay, and that, you think that, so you're doing the, the work west of the, I'm, I'm sorry, east of the house, as well as west of the house?
Right.
So that probably take a week? Is that a fair to say?
It looks like three, three working days, depending on the tide and the, and the weather conditions.
Okay, can, can we set up, let's see, a week from Monday is, would be February 6th. How about, can, can I, can we agree to meet like, just tentatively Wednesday, February 8th? I'll get back there. I'll try to round up Jim Walker. And then, you know, if I could get a two-week dispensation, you know, to file for a permit renewal from, from February 7th to February 21st, that would be great.
Is that doable, Sean?
At this point, I recommend if you can get this application fully filed by 2/7, and then the board can schedule it for 3/7. That's what I'd recommend. That gives everybody ample time. I think it's more than fair. And those are our meetings for the month, so.
Okay.
We have to work with.
Okay. So, so you have some time, Steve, to get this going, all right?
Could somebody, I don't know, all right, where, where do I get a blank, you know, like the template for the app, renewal application?
Is Jim Walker handling this, or who's handling this?
Well, he has, I mean, they've been kind of out of it since, since we got the original permit. I'll, I'll see if they're available to get back in. I haven't talked to Jim for, you know, eight months.
You can go online to the town portal, click on trustees.
Right.
Comits and applications, and all the paperwork should be available there.
Okay.
If not, I could have my office send you a hard copy in the mail.
If I have any difficulty, I'll, I'll, I'll follow the website. If I have any, if I have any problems, I'll get back in touch with you.
Okay.
All right. Very good. All right, well, we'll appreciate it, and we'll, we'll proceed on that, on that timetable.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a lot of general permit applications that we're going to have to jump into. And in addition, I'm going to request a walk-on for the Village of Quogue. I have several with land use ecological, are they, are they here, Charles?
Dan Hall, yes.
Dan Hall here?
He was on before.
Start with 31 Ogden Lane.
I have Dan. Dan is coming in now.
You could put up 31 Ogden Lane LLC.
Dan is coming now.
Thanks, Charles.
Mopped in paperwork.
Hello?
Hello, how are you?
Good, good morning. Dan Hall from Land Use on the panel.
Okay, let's go to the cover sheet. Let's look at that cover sheet first.
Scott, do you have the cover sheet in front of you while Lainey is-
I, I don't, because I've got so much paperwork here for what we're working on, it's not even-
There you go. There it is. Good job, Lainey.
All right. So this, this project, you scroll here. Keep scrolling. Okay. 311 by 128, plus or minus wide woodwalk landward of the existing bulkhead at the project site, where woodwalk currently doesn't exist, as depicted on the survey. Non-treated lumber is proposed to be utilized. So this is in the Village of Quogue. We do permitting work on the bulkhead, and, and obviously, some of the problems that we see when we ride down the Quogue Canal is the beautiful green lawns that are literally right up to the, the bulkhead, which is, would be great to, you know, push away and get people from, to stop the fertilization and, and, you know, the infusion of, you know, various different aspects going into the waterway that are not helpful. So, Dan, you want to explain your project kind of simple?
Yes, this project is the installation of a woodwalk, as you mentioned, landward of the bulkhead. This particular area, the bulkhead, has been fairly recently reconstructed with vinyl sheeting. And the walkways proposed landward of the bulkhead to match the rest of the site, which has a existing walkway, and it would traverse along the whole length of the Quogue Canal and the applicant's property, as well as it would go back on the entrance to the boat basin area, where the, where the new bulkhead is and where-
You, you want to show some pictures to the board, this way everybody, now you have some additional work getting done here as well?
Yeah, well, right before the holiday, right, beginning of the year, I submitted a new application to the, to the board to actually dredge that basin, and then to reconstruct the bulkhead around the basin. And the dredge spoil is going to be put on the site, on areas immediately adjacent to the, the bulkhead. It's pretty, it's pretty more of an extensive project than what-
Yeah.
Project is.
Trustee Parish, Trustee Parish and myself were there on Friday looking at, at all of this. It, it does need, you know, you do need substantial work there on that boat slip area, which, you know, you and I spoke about. You know, it all, it all, you know, it all seems fine. It's just, you know, it needs to be done, you know. We're in a village here, you know, so a lot of it, when you get into the upland, shifts off to, you know, their jurisdiction. But, you know, any way, shape, or form that you can step these projects back off of the waterfront, as I said, and not have people fertilizing and treating, putting treatment on, you know, for it to run off, you know, into the waterway would be great. So it, it's good to push that activity back. You know, if you're putting in material that are obviously compliant with our Blue Book, that don't require any oiling or, or treatment, and we're pushing the activities further away from the waterway, perhaps will be helpful for us.
So a couple, couple of questions. At present, there is lawn right up to the existing bulkhead. What we're, both prior to the construction. And what we're looking at doing is a woodwalkway, the entire length of the replacement bulkhead.
Well, no, there's two, two separate things. The area where the woodwalkway is proposed is actually bulkhead that is pretty functional at the moment. It's vinyl. And that's, that's the area where the, where we're not proposing new bulkhead. The new bulkhead proposed is actually within the, within the boat basin area, outside the area of that, at the entrance way there, you have the, the two streets, right?
The curved portion.
Correct.
Okay, so you're proposing new bulkhead, I mean, new walkway there. And then, our jurisdiction is 10 feet. So you're proposing a three and a half foot walk wide for that entire situation? What about the remainder of the 10 feet?
Well, Anne. You're in, you're in the village. You're in the village, so.
It's a four-foot wide walkway, but yeah, it's in, within the owner's property line in the Village of Quogue.
So the remainder of the 10 feet? It will just be lawn? It will go back to just being-
But this area, it's lawn, actually where they're proposing a new bulkhead within the boat basin, it's going to be loose rock.
Good. Which will work, which will work well. Do they have any plans perhaps for doing similar type of that along some of the other sections to kind of get further back from the four feet? Yes, no?
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah. And the rest of it, we're proposing to do the new bulkhead for the whole boat basin. It's going to be a walkway, and then the additional 10-foot area landward of the walkway is going to be loose stone.
Right, so, so at that point in time, as per our Blue Book regulations, you're, you're coming, you're totally compliant with our Blue Book regulations.
Yes.
And then in addition, you're pushing back from the waterfront, you're, you're moving this fertilization activity back away from the water. So in theory, you're going to be helping the waterway out by not putting these nutrients in and up so close to where it's entering the waterway.
Yes.
Is a walkway necessary for the entire 125 feet?
The owner would like that, yes, because he has visitors that come to the property and such, and sometimes they disembark and along the canal.
I, I think the walkway in this instance and location is okay, because of the fact of where you're at, where you are on the Quogue Canal, and the fact that you could push, you could push that activity further back with a compliant, a compliant material that's not going to be contributing to any, you know, influence of, of chemicals or fertilizers into the water, where you're going to push that activity back. And the fact that you're going to take that, you know, fix the internal part using vinyl, and then Blue Book compliant walkway with additional stones is also going to be pushing back so that that sheet runoff doesn't put those infusions into the waterway. There's a different situation going on here in, in, in the Quogue Canal. And if you ride up and down the Quogue Canal, you're going to see it, so.
You got to remember flooding during the Northeast or two, that's potentially going to overwash that bulkhead, and having a secure walkway there with stone would be the best, you know, first line of protection on the property as far as possible scouring out and like that.
Thanks, Ed.
I think this from a position of Blue Book compliance, this and the second phase of this project, it's going to comply with the Blue Book. So I, you know, I don't have any problem with this advancing. I don't see a problem. I see it helping us out.
I'm good with Scott.
I mean, Bill, you, Parish, Bill Parish, you were there. This is one of your first times. You, you agree?
Yes, I think that would work well. I mean, you walked me through it, and I think that's a good idea.
Hell.
I'm fine with it, Scott.
Annie?
Maybe you can show the, maybe if you have a plan of, you can show Anne the plan. Exactly where the, so she'll be more.
I think she's got, I think she understands it. You understand it, Anne? You good, Anne?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, so this one, this one you could advance.
We're advancing this. Does this need a new cover sheet or anything?
Uh, no, no, because it, no. Uh, no, no, because it, no, but there's going to be another phase of this, right, Dan?
Yes, correct.
This is the the second phase, we'll deal with that second phase when that that rolls in, we'll have that discussion. Uh, the next one that we have, uh, you want to, where do you go?
I'm still. Can we actually do um special conditions for thirty one Ogden if you don't mind?
We we you could put them up, put up the sheet and we'll go, the board will tick them off for you.
Okay.
You have the sheet?
Yeah. Um. Do you want me to read them off or? Share the screen, Lenea?
Yeah, if you put it on the screen, this way the board, you know, I mean, obviously he's got on there, he's going to use non-treated material.
Can you guys see it now?
Right, so let's see boat slip, we're not the bulkhead, no, concrete bridge, no, dock condition, no. Dock facility. Administration.
General bulkhead conditions?
Or general permit conditions notify off within twenty four hours.
All approvals required?
Well, yeah, all approvals required. Keep going. Three eighth, three eighths inch spacing between boards.
Okay.
What about ten foot buffer?
Oh, we're we're. In in this project, a ten foot buffer in addition, they're already pushing off, you know, four feet for the location that they're in. I don't know if. Your 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 client want to do more buffer material than it's there, you're you're going to be doing on the other one, the stone and gravel, are they going to do more? You're already pushing back.
Um, there was nothing proposed at the moment, I'd have to consult with them.
Right. I mean, we're for this location that you're in, you you got to look location specific. I don't.
Typically, typically, this is one of the conditions for.
Well, yeah, we're in the village of Quogue. Right?
Aware of that.
Yeah, so we're we're, you know, you, we're, I don't want to be, you know, everybody's got to respect everybody else's jurisdictions, you know, um. And in this case, where they're they're coming to us to push back from the waterway.
I'm just looking for consistency, that's all.
You know, I I.
Looking at it from a point of.
No, I I get it. We, I'm looking at it as a, as a site-specific situation.
Right, this is a different municipality, so this is a village involved. Um, so unlike with the town, um, so. The town code is written in such a way where when the trustees board in X jurisdiction, the conservation board may not, the village uh doesn't necessarily have that same practice. So you want to find something that's acceptable both to the village and to the trustees because there is an overlapping jurisdiction that's not addressed by their code.
Right.
Okay.
What I'm trying to say is that. Right, right now.
That condition for that explanation.
Right, this this project meets the blue book regulations, which is what he's trying to comply with by going with the material. There's additional public benefits and additional benefits to everybody because they're they're pushing back away. From the waterway, which is, which is a great thing. So I I I I think that they're they're engaging in a in a good project here and I I don't want to. Yeah, I don't want to sway sway him away from that.
The jurisdictional um aspect of it is uh clear to me now, are is there anything else that we need to address in the?
No, I think I think he's meeting the blue book regulations and I think that's all we could really, you know, want to do is meet those blue book regulations. Uh, he came to us for a permit, there's there's careful consideration for the waterfront and. I think it can advance the way it, the way it is.
Are all the conditions, special conditions?
I think it's all the standard conditions of our permit.
Okay.
Um, or or what needs to be done.
Okay. The special conditions forms that James usually is going to fill out, recommend to the board. Um, that's, that's why we're going through this process on work session today where we usually do it internally. Um, it's if you want anything like silt fencing, erosion controls, anything that's specific to this construction, this is where you're going to put that up.
Right, I don't, I don't see where that's going to, you know, he's 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 going to be working right up against the bulkhead, so he's not, he's not doing anything beyond that, so I I think he's okay. He's using compliant material, he's he's moving that grass back away from the waterfront, I think at the end of the day. You know.
Then then we can advance this.
We'd advance it. Meeting your blue book.
Lenea, whenever you're ready, you want to just put the next one up on the screen?
Sure.
Thanks. Can you guys not see it or? It's still the special conditions. How about now?
Yeah.
Good. Mm-hmm, okay.
All right, this one is Andrew J. Perrell. One forty seven Dune Road, this is, they want to do a a maintenance dredge on an existing. Canal to enable use of existing docks dredged five thousand square feet. To 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 three foot MLW. Four hundred and twenty five cubic yards of material to dredge and deposited and approved upland area. If you put some uh more of the pictures of this side, is uh somebody here from First Coastal to speak to this application?
Billy raised his hand.
Yeah, let let Billy in to explain this, this is a. You keep keep, uh, show us the area of. That's depicted on the plan where they're uh. Considering doing the dredging.
Sure, did you want to see it on GIS or on the hydrographic survey?
Put it on hydrographic survey first. Perfect, thank you.
So it's going from about. Between half a foot and a foot to, did you say three feet?
Has this ever been dredged before, Billy?
Uh, hey, everybody, Happy New Year, sorry, I'm just coming on.
Hi, Billy.
And congratulations, uh, Bill Parish, good to see you onboard. Thank you. This is not, I, this has been dredged, I believe it was dredged a long, a long time ago. Um, the the applicant actually secured a DEC permit. That he did not do the actual dredging for it. Uh, and it expired about three years ago.
Well, the DEC, there's no active DEC permit for this right now, right?
There's no, yeah, we're in the process of renewing it right now.
Right. So. It's like. You're gonna. You're proposing to dredge all this and then what, load this into containers?
Uh, that is the plan right now, yes.
So it's being moved offsite?
It'll, oh, yes, it's definitely being moved offsite. Yep, absolutely.
And where's it, where's it going to be moved to?
It likely has to be trucked to a disposal site up island.
Yeah, I mean, I, we went down there to look, this was, you know, blowing in bitter freezing cold. Right?
Yeah, I said he met you there.
Yeah, we were, we were there looking at. Yeah. Yeah, we.
Has there been any sediment samples as far as VOCs and stuff like that?
Yes, those are, those are all supplied to the DEC. Um, we did not see any um. Any, certainly any toxins on them. Uh, we, we can provide you with any of that if you if you need to.
I I think we're. Pretty strict. I think we we got to take a hard look at this thing just to make sure that anything that's done there doesn't create. A uh, a a problem with the surrounding wetland that exists there, because if it gets dredged. Too much, you know, you may create some kind of a problem, so I think we're going to have to. You know, take a a real hard look at this thing just to make sure that it's not going to create some some adverse. Uh, effect to the surrounding wetlands that are existing there.
Causing the side wetlands to slump and slough down the hill, basically.
Yeah, we were kind of sensitive to that, that's why the the section was, um, you know, focused to between the boat slips, if you see that. The actual western property line rides right up against the uh dredged. So. Close dredge area.
The canal or creek that is there now, it's, what is it, about fifty or sixty feet wide?
Yeah, it's actually sixty to eighty feet wide, yeah.
So. Putting it right in the middle, you really have. I don't see um a a tremendous amount of negative impact, so was it a one on three slope, which is pretty?
Yeah. Yeah, it's pretty gentle.
Is twenty five feet the minimum um that would be possible to dredge there as far as the width, Billy?
Um, you know, it's the most functional within, within it certainly being the the least. Um, we, you know, ideally, both of those uh floating docks that exist there right now, they would like to have boats on either side, but that's not very practical. So in order to get navigation to the inside of both of those uh boat slips. And they're about twenty five feet apart, that makes most sense to have that uh canalway dredge there and again, the the width of the uh. The uh. The creek or whatever we call it canal there is three times that essentially, so it 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 seems like it's a prudent way to. To to dredge that and not excessive.
Less than twenty five feet wide, you're not going to be able to turn a boat around that's twenty two feet or twenty five feet.
Yeah.
So it would be really not, it wouldn't even be a practical project if you did less of a than twenty five foot width.
Got it. Um, because there's really healthy marsh all along there as well, all along that hu- whole stretch. Um. All of this work is going to be done by barge.
Correct.
There's not going to be anything done by land, right?
Now, there's no way to access it by land.
And where are you going to unload the barge? With the containers?
Still determining that.
And how are you going to unload the containers from the, from the barge to the?
Usually it's a a long reach excavator that loads directly into a truck.
Out of the, out of the containers on a barge.
Containers, yeah, or the 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 baffling that's built on the barge.
Okay. You have an overhead shot of this?
An aerial, um, the town GIS probably.
And you want to, you want to get down there and take a look at the vegetation?
Did you ask me or?
Yeah, I'm asking you, did you want to go check the vegetation, take a look at the surrounding vegetation?
I'm looking at it from both the GIS and the photos and I can see from, I I'm okay as long as uh. As long as there's no disturbance to or sloughing of the bank. Um, when work is.
Sorry, we're well off the banks, that's, that was a a key feature of designing this.
When did you think it was done before, Billy?
It was never, I, it could have been thirty, forty, fifty years ago, I have no idea, but we have no recent history, right?
It doesn't even look as if there's a remnant of a channel, maybe out by the point on that shoal, but.
And and do you recall this ever prior being dredged?
No. Not in my lifetime.
Do we need to take a look through our records?
Uh, you're probably pushing back to the forties. If it was done.
Right, and when did this application go off to the state, Billy?
Uh, same time we submitted to you, which is about uh two months ago, I think.
I got you. All right, so so we got some time to do some more due diligence on this because obviously you're going to need everybody's permits. To 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 get this thing finalized and and proper.
Um, yeah, I'm happy and available to meet anybody on site to walk through it.
Let's, let's do that, let's put this one on hold and take a, uh, take a look since we do have some time on it. Um, that way, everybody's comfortable with the surrounding areas. And um, and then we can collaborate on making sure we make a good decision here, so let's put that one on hold and see what the schedule is like for a warmer day perhaps.
A warmer day sounds good to me.
Guys are going to be waiting a while.
Maybe not, I don't know, it's gone up to the forties as we get it.
Only for two or.
I'm I'm available whenever you guys want to meet, so I'm happy to, um, the applicant's obviously very anxious, both of these boats are, uh, they they, you know, it's, this little creek is silted over over the. Last uh decade or so, so it it's got minimal use to it. And the, you know, it's a water quality issue as well as um. Improving navigation and and minimizing disturbance to the bay bottom through the navigation. So, uh, I think it's a, I really think it's a good project.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Um, up next is twenty three Marlin Rouge.
Twenty three, do we have shoreline bulkhead here?
Kristen's on.
Kristen's on, so they want to rip out and replace seventy five fitted Navy wall bulkhead with a six by twelve step down box. And a two seven southerly return, replace existing boardwalk with six foot composite decking install four foot gravel area landward of the boardwalk. And they want to permit a five by fifteen jet ski ramp. And a six point seven by fifteen easy floating dock. And all timber material to be non-treated vinyl sheeting galvanized hardware. Kristen, are you here?
She's here, she's on mute still.
Lenea, could we see the plans maybe or photo? Thank you so much.
So there's some issues here that have to be addressed. Uh, from a technical standpoint, I was hoping for Kristen to come in, this is another application that Trusty Parish and myself went to on Friday. Uh, first is the the jet ski floats, I think they have to come off of this application and they have to go on a separate application. Right, our board handles that separately, so that's got to come off of this. Uh, and and also in addition, the location that they were at is not an appropriate location, it's not going to work because. Blue book, I believe, calls for ten, ten feet off of the property line.
Ten foot.
Which is nowhere, I don't believe it was anywhere near, near that, what's existing right now, so what's there right now is not, it's not going to work, it's not compliant. So that's going to have to come off and you have to figure, figure that out. We're going to have to get an updated cover sheet and then a separate application with a request for that. But. You are aware that. Our blue book regulations only allow for two vessels. Right? So you're requesting.
Yes.
You're requesting for what is outside of blue book regulations. Am I, am I clear on that, Sean?
Yes, you are.
So you you're going to have.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Anne.
Yeah, we can hear you, so you you're going to have to take a look at this application, revise the cover sheet, have a conversation with your applicant because. They're asking for things that are outside of the blue book.
So, so originally what they had is we were legalizing it and then we were just going to move in with the five by fifteen float and the six by fifteen. Floating dock, they're both um. Um. They're both jet seat, one's a ramp, one's a float, then we moved everything ten feet off the property line and I did apply separately. For the one jet ski float and um wave on a ramp. So I already submitted that.
Right, but that's not what they got.
Right, they're going to remove it and go into conformity, so I told them they were only allowed to have two. And. They have to be ten feet off the property line, that's why we move them.
Have you submitted that already, Kristen? Is this the most updated stuff? Is this the most updated?
I submitted the application for the PWC, the floats and the.
It's okay, so we're just working on, we're just working on the regular application now.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so the cover sheet needs changing then.
Right, the cover sheet needs changing.
Updating.
And so are the floats.
Well. Yeah, I would remove what activity we're not going to permit on this, right, because you can transfer that off to a separate application.
Right.
Because the pla- the plans need to be updated as well.
Right.
For as proposed activities and notes.
Right, everything's, everything's got to sync up because you, it's 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 clear when you go there that it's, it's not. It's not compliant.
Conform, it doesn't conform, right?
Right, so we we want to make sure if we're going to permit something that it's compliant with our blue book regulations. Um, so this one, we're going to have to hold.
Yeah, I got you.
You can have the time to make the adjustments that you need to have a conversation with your client. And get it to where it uh. It works.
Scott, what's, you know the width of that, that, of that lagoon?
Uh, it's very narrow, uh, lagoon, I don't, is there an issue? I mean, it's, it's.
If he's going to put a dock, it might not be enough room for boats to pass.
Well, there's enough, there's definitely enough there, it's just that they, they got to have the proper number there, there's enough space there for what they, what they want there, it's just. It's out of conformity now and and the way this application is, everything's out of chive up, they got to do a little. it's out of conformity now and and the way this application is, everything's got to drive up. They got to do a little work on it. So she can take the time to do a little work on it, speak to her client, and then we'll put it back on for the next meeting. Um, so that it 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 hits Blue Book compliance. Alright, is there anything else with that one, Kristin? You understand? And you could give me a call.
I understand that part.
Yeah.
Okay, and what about the the bulkhead I can leave alone with the 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 boardwalk and the buffer?
Go, but yeah, that, yeah, and you're not changing elevation, right? You're going to go with the exact same elevation.
I can leave, no. Right. I just want to make sure that I can, that there's no issues with that before I make any other adjustments to the plan.
No, the bulkhead and and all of that was fine. You just don't want to change elevations over there. You took a hard look at the adjoining properties and there's there's no reason to change elevation. So you just have to be very clear uh on the application that there's, you're not going to be changing elevations from the existing that's already there. There's no reason to to do that. Purpose of material and everything else that you want to do, that's all okay. Buffering and, you know, that's all okay. It's just maintain your elevation and get the jet ski slash boat float thing into Blue Book complacency and in the proper spot. So take a little bit of time, speak to them.
Okay.
If you need anything further, just you can call me and I can meet you there or whatever you want.
Perfect. Thank you, Scott.
We're holding this.
Yes, hold it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, trustees. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Got a modification. Oh, we got uh
Dan, are you still?
Drive, Dan.
Yes, I'm still here.
Good. Want to describe the project, Dan?
Yes, uh, this is a um an existing dock permit that we are requesting to have modified for the location of the dock. The owners are proposing to relocate the dock um, from the east side of the property to the west side of the property. You know, personal preference is one reason, and also it's uh the adjacent owner to the east, uh, the Weinbergs had constructed a dock. And um, they wanted to move dock further away. You know, it gives them a little bit more of a width in the uh, stone creek there. If they move it to the west, it's closer to like two hundred, two hundred fifty feet across. And also the only other difference will be that the dock is going to be shorter because of the uh sounding data encountered at the site. It's going to be reduced, uh, the length that a catwalk is going to be reduced by twelve feet. And um, the exact location is going to be, uh, put the mooring pile twenty-five feet off of the uh western property boundary. And the catwalk will be approximately thirty-five feet off, I mean, not the catwalk, the walk, or the catwalk will be approximately thirty-five feet off the um western property. Uh, other than that, it's the same um dock structure that has uh exists in the existing permit.
Linnea, could we, the um aerial or some photos and the plans, please?
Or of course.
Scott, you wanted to have
What's that, Bill?
You wanted to have a distance of the width.
Yeah, he just gave the number. I think he gave us what, two hundred fifty feet is your number?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't see it. We didn't see it on the plan when we were down there.
It's actually, it's it's greater than um the previous location.
Okay, so we're so we're meeting all the tests on the third. Um, you know, you're not, you're not blocking. I'm looking at the uh, we just didn't see the number on there. We were down there in the bitter cold blowing uh
Oh, no, I understand, totally understandable. It's uh, rough weather day.
You you mean distance to the the other side?
The other shore and From the end of the dock to the other side of the creek, yes.
Yes, he's he's got plenty of space there and I know I'm looking at the hydrographic survey relative to the where the channel is and whatnot. There's no impediment to that. So I I don't, I don't see an issue with it with the modification. I don't know if any of the other board members have issue with modification.
There's no coverage on the upland property where you can have the path to the dock, is there, Scott?
That's a
Village, okay.
Yeah, I'm fine, I I'm fine with it. You know, it's a modification. We would go with the initial, you're shortening it. It's a better location. It's not seems to meet the Blue Book tests. I don't have an issue with it.
Does does the language about the natural path need to be removed because that's not our jurisdiction?
I don't, I don't have a problem with leaving that that in there, with the natural paths and natural path, you know.
It was, it was on the plan for the original permit application approved.
Right, so it was already on there, so I just look at to handle the modification and not
That, um, I I recommend you leave it so you have matching permits, uh, because it is the village of Quag jurisdiction, not the town.
Right, I I I would leave it alone. Just grant the modification, meets the Blue Book regulations. I don't see a reason to uh take a hammer to everything here.
Again, just looking for consistency, but fine.
Yeah, well, consistency is important, but you know, on the environmental ends of this and a lot of times you end up in a site-specific situation as well. So consistency and also site-specific situations are going on when it comes to these environmental issues as well.
We're not going to put an overland catwalk there. It's it's a high, it's a high property, so a brown bark trail or something like that would be the most appropriate common sense to use.
Right. Can we advance the modifications? Everybody go with that?
I am.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so Mark, this is in advance.
Um, I don't know if you guys can see the special conditions I pulled out quickly if you wanted to do those, Scott.
I I would say if if there were special conditions that were pre-existing on the prior permit, it will transition to this permit because we just modified. So I would leave the exact same conditions that were on the prior permit.
Alright.
You have those, Linnea?
I do, yeah. I um, I'll just go over them later on after the meeting.
Yeah, I, that that, Ann, I would maintain consistency.
That's fine.
Sure.
That's fine. Maybe you could take a look uh at it with her, Scott.
Yeah, I'll be there tomorrow. I'll be, we'll be in the office tomorrow, right?
Um, I will not be in the office tomorrow. I will be back next week.
Okay.
But I can look at it towards the end of today and like have it laid out for you.
That's fine. That's fine, and I'll be there. Next one that I have is uh Norman H. Pessin, forty-four Walker Avenue in East Quad.
Yes, hold on one second for me.
Dan, you want to describe it?
Yes, um, this project entails the reconstruction of an existing bulkhead. Uh, the bulkhead is proposed to be constructed utilizing vinyl sheeting. It's proposed to be six inches higher than the existing. Uh, there is a ten-foot wide non-turf, non-fertilization buffer proposed. Um, or maybe existing landward of the bulkhead. At the south end is an eighty-eight foot return and at the north end there's a fifteen-foot bulkhead return, which are included in the three hundred and twenty-five linear feet with bulkhead to be proposed uh to be reconstructed at the site. I think it's pretty straightforward, oh.
It is straightforward. It it is, it is a very straightforward project. He does have his buffer. He's using the proper material. This is another one that trustee Parrish and myself went down there and and walked the length of, and it it really does need this, you need this project to be done. I, it meets all the Blue Book tests. I don't have a problem with it. I I think he needs to get this done.
Scott, is this one of the concern over with respect to the code enforcement?
Yeah, I mentioned that too. I mentioned that to him on the phone. I just wanted to, uh, we we could mention it again is that uh you you should probably have your applicant take a look at the fencing around his uh his pool. I don't think you're handling that, but there's there's definitely, I think, a fence issue around the pool. Uh, it's not our jurisdiction. I don't know if you're even handling it, but if you do speak to your applicant, perhaps you want to, you want to mention it to him.
I will, I will definitely bring that to their attention.
Right, I I mentioned that to you the other day.
Yes.
Um, let him know. But in terms of the bulk
I'm just looking at the properties on either side. There's a road end that abuts the property to the east, correct?
Um, yeah, it's like a a right of ways. It's not actually a functional road. I think the road stops um further landward. But yes, there is a roadway there, uh, I guess, easement for the roadway for Walker Avenue.
So there's no bulkhead then in front of that roadway?
I don't believe there is. I think there's just some um stone riprap.
Yeah.
And I'm, and I'm looking at the property to the west as well that doesn't appear to be bulkheaded?
No, they have um rock revetment, boulder revetment, and some rock riprap protecting the um Altrona Florist Inn.
And there's a really healthy wetland just to the west of the bulkhead on the west side, right?
Yep, uh, yeah, there's actually, that's what they, it looks like they installed some rock riprap in front of that to help protect that wetland area. Which is um adjacent to where we are proposing the eighty-eight foot return.
Scott, is this right by Court of Cr- uh, not by uh, what's the name of it? Um
You go down off of um
It's the, it's right after the gas station in the village of
Right, Walker Avenue. You go all the way down and then Walker Avenue, go in through the narrow area. I mean, it's bulkhead, it's shot. I mean, it's completely
Well, I was going to say it's just to the west of Bay Avenue Ed in East Quad.
Yeah, it's with Wes, you know where Walker is. But it's a pretty straightforward project.
I was just looking at the properties on either side, making sure that we're um
We're just
Taken into consideration, yeah, with the rise in elevation.
Creek is just west of this, right, Scott?
What's that? Bay is
Dave's Creek.
Yes.
And that's that that beach with the rock revetment is where the about thirty years ago is where the deposition for Dave's Creek dredging went, and they did a whole project there and it's done very well.
Right. Yeah, I don't, I don't have an issue with what he wants to do here.
No, it makes sense.
I I don't
And they got a wonderful uh rock scour pad behind the bulkhead, so.
Right. He's just trying to maintain the property and um he's Blue Book compliant. It's kind of straightforward and
I'm just, I'm just looking, there's a long stretch of unbulkheaded waterfront just to the west. So I just want to make sure we're taking into consideration any uh potential for erosion to that property.
It has rock gabions in front of it and rocks behind it.
Further to the west than
Right, we're not, he's not um he's not putting a structure where there was no structure. He's just replacing what's existing there, you know, so it's not gonna yeah, so I mean, it's it's, he's just trying to protect his own property in a diligent fashion with Blue Book compliant materials and methodology, so I I don't see an issue with it.
It's pretty stable along that shoreline.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with this with this advancing. And he's got in there the buffering, right? So on your, on your special conditions uh on this one, if you want to go through that you can, you can check off the uh
Bulkhead refacing.
It's going to be in vinyl, right?
Yes.
Okay, um you're only going up six inches, right? Is that what you?
Correct.
Which is, which is reasonable for the area. Um, you're putting in the buffer. He's got it in his permit. So if you want to check the ten-foot buffer, he's got that in his permit.
Okay.
Cover sheet. And you notify the board before you start or just a standard all pools required.
Any of these, the new bulk cutting or no?
It's not new. It's just a reface, replace, so. Now, anybody else want to add any special conditions on here?
Well, there's a five-foot passing way along that whole shore too.
Okay.
Maintain a five-foot passing way. I seen that.
Oh, hold on, it was down here, I believe. Um, no, it's actually up here, sorry. Right. Is that five-foot passing way, right? I believe that's in um
Is that, is that, there it is. Owner must maintain, just under new bulkhead.
There we go. Sorry about that.
Alright. I think that's pretty much it.
Sorry.
Alright, so this can, this can advance at this point. Okay.
Okay.
I I do have a walk-on that I would like to request the board, allow me to walk on at this point in time for the village of Quag.
I'll second that, Scott.
Okay, are we all in favor?
Alright.
Good with that? Okay, so if you could put that um Woody Quagannick application up.
Sure, um, I just have to do it by the personal ID, one second, or actually
Linnea, you're doing great, by the way.
You're doing great.
You, I had a technical issue. I promise everything was set up beforehand.
You're doing great.
No worries. You're doing good.
Thank you. So um, just pardon me and ignore the highlighted area on GIS. That's just the uh, property that is next to what we want to be looking at. Um, it's just hard to find this property on GIS, so I believe what you're looking at here is the boat ramp.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, I'm just going to pause it on here for you guys so I can pull up the cover sheet.
Can you move it, move it down a little bit?
Sure.
Please.
Like here?
No. Yeah, so it shows a little bit north of the boat ramp.
Okay, so up here.
Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you.
Do you need it zoomed in more or no?
Uh, if you want to a little bit.
Yeah, if you zoom it in, let's take a look.
I want to see what's on the bottom, how, you know, where the channel is and stuff like that. That's
Too much?
Leah, look, perfect.
Okay.
Okay, with you, Ed?
Yeah, looks good, Billy.
See if I see any claims now.
Okay. So you can, you could get a good, good picture of what the area looks like there from the high tide mark to the low tide mark. You can get a good, good lay of the land. Can you scroll to the um the description cover sheet?
Yeah, I'm just pulling it up for you guys because I had to, I have to go into my files real quick.
No worries.
Scott, do they have an agent?
Uh, yeah, it's DKR Shores. Is Gina here today?
Here.
Hi Gina.
Hi. Okay. Let me just put it up here for you guys, one second.
Generally, we we would wait, we would waive fees for, you know right?
Yes.
Holiday.
Thank, thank you.
Yeah, and it, you know, it's public access. It's a good project, you know, to rebuild the ramp, the ramp. You know, which, we're trying to rebuild our ramps, right? So we're all forgetting people, you know, whether they're hunting or whatever, fishing and using the ramps. Um, so we would do that. But Gina, why don't you go ahead and explain this project?
Okay, um, it's an existing boat ramp um that has uh been dilapidated for quite some time and really is a safety issue. Um, there's broken concrete. Um, it's barely accessible. The ramp was also used by the Bay Constable. Um, so hence, public access is is reasonable and necessary. Um, basically, it's removing the debris and the broken concrete that's there. Um, and then uh placing precast concrete slabs um that'll interlock. Um, it was designed by uh Delangelo Andrews for me. And um then above mean high water, which is kind of out of your guys' jurisdiction, um, but just for FYI. Um, they're going to re-asphalt um the parking area as well, so. But it it is something that, you know, it is a budget um item. Um, you know, they are pressed for time as well to get this done uh before the season. And I have all the other permits, so.
Right, I I'm good with this. That's why I requested it as a walk-on combination.
So much.
You're very welcome. I like to work with the village of Quag. I like to have good worker relationship. Uh, and it's it's a good project and my recommendation is we advance it, obviously, uh, without the fees and we work with uh work with our neighbors here.
Yes, it's a really good project. It's something that we're going to be looking to do throughout the town in our, some of our launching ramps.
So as we're looking at this, especially in light of the fact that we're going to be hopefully replacing more of these ramps, is cast concrete, precast concrete and um asphalt? Are those the most permeable or pervious surfaces possible for this area?
Um, and no, I can't say that that would be in fact case. Uh, however, you know, being a ramp or designing something that's designed to last for a minimum of thirty years. Um, and something permeable gravel Um, and something permeable gravel is not something, and that's going to last for a long period of time. Especially if it's used um regularly um by commercial, you know, marinas actually use this ramp. To offload and transport uh vehicles for winter storage, there's many marinas that use this, the big constable uses it. Recreational um Village of Quogue um owners use this, uh so. You know, when I was there actually photographing, um, there was a, a marina that was using it to transport boats. So it, it's a pretty trafficked area and it's the only ramp in the area, um. You know, that's used to this extent, so um the precast concrete is actually after. Um, going through a couple of varieties of, you know, poured in place, cofferdam, etc. Bigger precast panels, you know, after pricing this, um this is the most cost efficient. Way to basically redo a ramp and in the past, we've done this before. On many of the town trustees ramps like down on bay, um, you know, the, we've done, we've done the precast concrete. So it is the most cost effective approach to get the job done in the least amount of time. And that's why it's designed like this.
So is there possibility looking um to perhaps change things up a bit going forward? When those precast concrete slabs are put in, rather than having them abut each other, could it be that?
No, they have to interlock, they, they specifically have to interlock, so they don't come apart.
So then at the top of the ramp, is there a possibility where there could be um a. Uh, s- some pavers or something that's put in there?
They'll, they'll break and they'll dislodge, it's just not cost effective, it's not an efficient way to. Um, promote the project at all. Um, and this is, you know, this is a village, we're, we're under budget, um, you know, we're specifically, this was just. Very thought out, this design um for a number of years, actually, and this design is actually based on. Other ramps in the past um that were done by South Hampton Town. So this is, this is kind of protocol um, the way we're doing it and the existing concrete and asphalt. That is upland is actually out of, you know, ch- town trustees jurisdiction. Um, and it's just basically resurfacing what's there, because it's breaking up.
You got a good project, I, I think you got a good project, Gina, I, I really do, I, I think that the. We, we're gonna be engaging ourselves into this, uh what is unfortunate to point out uh in the uh, in the picture here. Is that we were working in collaboration here with this uh upweller with, I guess, Kim Tetral from Cornell Cooperative and the things all beat up over there. You can see it in the corner, uh, we went over there to take a look at it and I let him know, so hopefully they can take care of that, but. Relative to this project, what you want to do, I think it should advance um with just standard conditions, I don't, I don't think we need to put any. Over, I don't think we need to, to put any of these special conditions on, this is a standard public works project.
So would you just like to put the general permit conditions on there?
That's all.
Okay.
Can I make one comment about pavers and uh blocks and stuff like that? Um, you have to remember, it's around the marine environment and saltwater is very caustic to many of these materials. And also you have to remember, you've got a lot of freezing and thawing during the winter months. Uh, the reason to use these uh slabs, because they're constructed. Uh, with concrete that is uh specifically used around the marine environment and is tolerant over freezing and thawing. Um, the town uh at my father's park used some of these papers originally on the launching ramp. And the, literally the paper's completely disintegrated over about a ten year pro uh period, so. You have to be very careful and what you, what type of cement and product you use in these, these areas, because. It will, you know, disintegrate from the uh freezing and thawing and the saltwater.
Okay, I see, but I think as um. The uh, as we look towards the future and especially just given uh how much flooding there is now on a constant basis. That we have to address the increase or the. Maintenance of non pervious surfaces and really look to see what we can do. To increase pervious surfaces and stewards of the environment, that's our responsibility. To uh be looking to see what we can do differently going forward, so.
But I, I, I think you also do have to take it into consideration site specific and project specific, this is a commercial heavy use. Public works project, it's designed and, you know, obviously, there's nothing, you know, bad for the environment relative to this. To this.
No, but, but I hear you. Taking consideration the wave fetch that was gonna blow all the way from the western side of Quonix, so it's probably a mile and a half. So if you put bluestone or any of the smaller rocks there, they will literally wash out of that area.
Right, I, I, I got, I gotta call a timeout, folks, uh we, we need, we need to temporarily adjourn this meeting because we have a scheduled. Um, Zoom executive session for the purposes of discussing litigation at eleven o'clock. So uh Sean, where are you?
Are on with outside counsel for this action.
Without, with outside counsel, so um for a procedural basis, I guess I have to make a motion or, or Charles, we're gonna have to. We're gonna have to adjourn this temporarily to go into exec and then come back.
What time do you think? Cause I have other things on.
Yeah, we're gonna come back, but we have scheduled outside council executive session for eleven o'clock.
Right, so we need a second on that and then a board vote.
I have a little second on that Scott.
Uh, we, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Someone call me. Um, alright, so I'd like to motion to come back into the work session, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, alright, so let's reconvene um after a short break for executive session. Monday, January twenty fourth, twenty twenty two work session, um next up is trustee Pell.
I have Ford Dune Associate at ten forty five Flying Point Road Watermill and. Billy Mack is First Coastal is the person in charge of this.
Hey guys, how are you?
Hey bro.
Yeah, nice to see you guys again. Um, so this is a uh dredging for water quality to Jewel Pond, uh which is um. Mostly within the Ford Dune Association. And uh the aerial that was up, you could see their, their property bounds the south. And west, uh south and east sides of um, uh Channel Pond. And um the goal would be, I, I don't know if you could pull up the hydro survey. Uh, you could see that there's, there's virtually no water that uh goes in and out of uh Channel Pond. You can check the depth measurements, they're, you know, point zero, point zero one. Um, really, really low, especially under the bridge, so the goal of this.
Open to a flow.
Yeah, the, the goal would be to get this uh flushing properly. And uh Ford Dune Association has uh agreed to kind of spearhead and quasi sponsor this pro- project. They do have the property that's just to the south and west, uh south and east, sorry, uh and uh that would be the staging area.
Can you go back to the overhead shot, please, and could you move it down? No, no, other way to the, so we can see the bridge, yeah, right there, can you zoom in on the bridge so people know exactly what we're talking about?
Right here?
That.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, that's it.
There were also.
Can you zoom out a little bit, you, you zoom into, that's it, right there, perfect.
You also had photographs, oh sorry, you also had some photographs, I think, um.
That are helpful, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do have the photographs pulled up um right here.
Yeah, that's at a high water, by the way, but uh, which of course fluctuates because of mecox, but uh most of the time it is um.
It's dry, at low bay, it's completely dry, it's probably actually a foot of elevation above dry.
Mm-hmm. So we'd love to um get the, the uh, the blessing of the trustees to undertake this project, we obviously. Uh filed applications with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and our Corps of Engineers. Uh, and um, you know, there's, there's a lot of uh, um, it's, it's got a positive appeal because of the water quality aspects of this, um.
Are you gonna dredge on the, uh both on the west side and the east side?
Yes, yeah, the goal would be to do that, um, it, you, you know, there's a, we could get access to um the. East side through the boat ramps and um.
Little.
Yeah, small barges, and then on the inside Channel Pond itself, we would have to create some kind of corridor for access. Um, and that would also be the staging area to remove the soils.
Would, would you do this with an excavator or a small uh hydraulic pump?
Uh, honestly, that's undetermined right now, we're working with Chesterfield and others to, to confirm exactly the best way to do that.
Because on the inside or the western side, if you had a small hydraulic pump. And you put it in there at, at a high bay, you'd be able to actually dig your way right to the deep part of Channel Pond and then. That would accomplish what you need to do.
Yeah.
And you could probably pump the material to uh Flying Point Parking Lot, at which time you could dike it off there, let it dry, because it's. Probably mostly sand and then put it on the barrier beach. And one of the, one of the homeowners that are probably need sand from, you know, erosion on their beaches.
Has the analysis been done yet?
The analysis is underway, uh the D E C.
So what, okay, so that's a good suggestion, Ed, maybe we should wait for the analysis and see.
Do we know when the last time this was done, this was dredged?
Yeah, when I was first on the board. Prior to the house being placed on the property, that used to be the deposition site for this project and then they put a house there, so. Can't use it anymore. That's how the house actually got allowed to be built there. Actually, the guy who did, built that house, the contractor was supposed to dredge that, he never did. He got an application permit to do it, remember, remember Ed? I think Billy. Yeah, that was one. Yep.
And Billy, what are the, um, did the homeowner state what their water quality um concerns were in undertaking this project?
Well, one of the, and one of the things is when the bay necks off from uh the uh. Mecox, it becomes almost fresh in there and it, a lot of the marine animals that live in there probably don't survive through a long period of uh. You know, low bay, which we haven't had much of, but if we did, it, it could be a problem.
Right, I just wondered if there were concerns about either algae or um harmful algal blooms. Billy, has, has that been expressed by the homeowners? Billy Mack.
Billy Mack just text me, he thinks that, um, Charles, can you check on him, I think he said he's froze, not in ice, but that. His, his computer's. And I haven't, on, on the time that I've been on the board, we've never had any issue with blue green algae in that pond that I can remember.
Okay, I just know less.
This left, there's not that sub, that much septic going in there, that's one of the reasons, it's not that many houses around it. But there are a lot of fish and uh, you know, different, pretty diverse environment.
Yep, Charles, can you help Billy Mack or is that his own computer? Billy Mack, try turning off your video, sometimes that, um, then you can still speak. Even though we can't see you, sometimes that helps the wifi.
He's, he's not on anymore.
Maybe he's good, he needs to reconnect.
Okay.
I'm calling right now.
Hi, this is Aaron, please.
Phone number.
Is that your, your bookie?
How do they dredge under the road, how do they get underneath there?
Well, they, they'd have to uh put a piece of machinery like a, a small hydraulic dredge and actually. Off of a crane and just put it in the pond and at high tide and dredge the other side.
I, I mean, your suggestion is a good suggestion, Ed. Get hold of Billy.
There was no other access there really, other than.
Your, your suggestion's a good suggestion, but you need the analysis of that, of the spoils before we could even act on that.
Well, this, this, I mean, it's, other than farmland and that would probably be the only uh. Uh, metals or anything that you would find in there is from agriculture, other than that, I, I don't see, there's no boat, boat building, there's no uh. No stuff, you know, uh industrial, light industrial, so it's, it's.
Right.
You know, but they, but they definitely need to do a sediment sample.
Yeah, but yeah, pending that, it's a good suggestion, you know?
Absolutely, but so there's still some things that need to be worked, in case Billy Mack can't get back on, there's still some things that need to be worked out here. Like as far as.
So since he can't get back on, you want to put it on hold, pending what's gotta be worked out and move to the next one and.
Yeah, I think he's back now.
Are you back? He's back.
Can you guys see me? I'm on my uh.
It's on his iPhone.
We can hear you.
Keeping the crap out, hi guys, I'm back, I don't know if you can see me.
Can you see him?
No, we can hear you though.
We can see you, we can see you, I can see you.
Billy, hold your phone closer, we could hear you better a moment.
Cause he was on my phone.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm on my phone, sorry.
There you go.
My, my, my computer shut down on me in the middle of the meeting.
I can see you now, you're back on.
Good. Okay, um, so what were the questions that I missed?
Uh, water quality.
Water quality.
It, have, has there been, uh have the homeowners noticed anything as far as any, what, what um. Gave them cause for requesting this?
Uh, there's a lot of stagnant water that is up on the north side and then uh Channel Pond leads to another little uh creek. Um, that's to the farther west.
Yes, to the north.
And north, yeah, um that are, that are really very stagnant, so there's no flow there at all. And a lot of this seems to be pointing towards the limited uh introduction of new flushing water under the bridge.
Okay, so title exchange primarily then.
Yeah. But it's a, uh, you know, it's certainly a favorable project and we're obviously uh in the process of working with the state to get all the details of the dredging. Uh, and the core um done and um I think it'd be beneficial to the trustees as well.
I think it's a good, good project, Billy Mack, um, is any trees actually grown in the slushway there?
We did look for uh aquatic vegetation in there, I didn't see any.
Okay.
There's a bunch of trees that are overgrown, the bulkhead, um, a lot of pine trees and stuff like that, especially on the east side.
They're, they would have to be trimmed back.
Yeah.
It's a good project, they just gotta work out the details, like, you know, Ed had a good suggestion about utilizing the uh. The hydraulic jet dredge and de-watering, but obviously that would need some uh good information on the uh core samples, you know? You can determine if that would work out.
Yeah, yeah, the other suggestion for the dredge spoils, um depending on the, you know, the condition of them would be to. Help with the boat ramps that are within mecox uh area and um. You know, whichever would be the easiest to, to take it to.
You mean, you, you, you mean uh use them at the boat ramps or you, what are you talking about, or?
Yeah.
Get it off to an upland site?
Yeah, to, to, to take it to an upland site that would ne- need uh beach renourishment and some of the boat ramps themselves have been eroded. Over the years, so the idea would be to combine it with something like that or as Ed suggested, use it on the beach, depending on the, the uh grain size.
I think that would be the most appropriate method, just put it on the beach and, you know, in January and by the summertime, it'll be all just washed out.
Got to see what the state says about that, I know sometimes, you know, dependent upon the.
Grain size.
Material, yeah.
Cause you have not yet, you have not yet done a core sample, right Billy, or you haven't gotten results?
That's in the process right now, I believe the samples have been uh provided to the lab.
Okay, so this is. So this is, looks good, but we need a few more details then, right, you guys?
Yep.
Okay, happy to provide them as we get more.
That's great. Good project.
So we'll hold this up, hey Bill, we, we'll hold this over for the next meeting for you, for the more information.
Or, or do you want to alert us when you have the, the uh?
Yeah. When we get closer to the D E C. When we get closer to the D C, with that information, we'll provide it to you guys and then we'll re-agenda this.
That makes the most sense.
All right, sounds good. It's a good project.
Excellent.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Billy.
Thanks, Billy.
Bye bye.
Okay, trustee Warner's up.
Okay.
Is Gina here?
I contacted her. She was supposed to be on.
She had, oh. She's still. There she is.
So the board's. I'm having computer malfunctions today.
It's all right. Is what about Sean? Are you saying something?
Yeah, on this next one coming up on twenty five. Coram. Or Marant.
Coram point.
That planning board approval is needed for site disturbance. So just everyone be aware of that.
Site disturbance. Okay, what's this involving?
I don't know that. I've never had to do that before.
Right, this property is specifically flagged for that, so you need a site disturbance plan if any work is going to be completed from the upland direction. So just be aware of it to the planning board if you need to, you know, if you need to.
Are you in the upland direction, Regina?
No, we're not going past beyond what we have to for the bulkhead. He's coming in via water, so.
Okay, great.
To be applicable. So anyway, it's a basic R and R. You know, construction. The bulkhead is, well, it's definitely compromised. It's starting to blow out. The bulkhead just adjacent, we did a couple of years ago after Sandy. So we're looking.
You got done south of there.
Yeah, yeah, Ron did that one next door.
So there was batten piles put on this property and the other one north of there to shore up the bulkhead after Sandy so it didn't fall over. So I'm assuming the batten piles and everything is going are going to be removed. Correct?
Correct. That is correct.
Did they put like pavers in back here?
Yeah, just because it kept sinkholes. You know, dangerous.
We allowed them to put pavers like ten feet back and then put vegetation in the pavers. During Sandy, because of the height of the bay and the overwash, it actually made the bank behind it liquid and several of the bulkheads toppled over because of that. So.
That was just temporary. Obviously, that'll be removed. Um, I do have one quick question, though. She wanted to me to ask you guys down at the, sorry. Down at the right above the bulkhead, like just landward of the bulkhead, she it don't have like where the pavers are right now, she would like a small area to put like kayak storage, like S U P is up there. So maybe like a ten, you know, by twenty foot deck or like a six by six foot deck. I didn't, I said I would have to discuss it with you because they're not currently there. So it's kind of like where the stairs are in the landing.
Yeah, that's all the three, there's actually three houses going to the south. They have catamarans and, you know, kayaks and stuff on their property, very similar to that. Most, I don't know if they have decks. I just think they just have like pavers where they put them on. But I mean, it's really not going to affect the area that much.
No, but I'll I'll wanted to add it, but I wanted your input first before, you know, I went ahead and did it.
I mean, you're going to leave the bulkhead the same height as originally is now?
Yes. So it's just like basic boardwalk that we generally do then we're bulkhead, but I try not to plan anything other than what's reasonable and necessary, so. You know, I would say probably maybe ten by ten or six by sixteen, something just long enough to put like paddleboards on.
Paddleboards on?
Yeah, like six by sixteen, like paddleboards.
I mean, I mean, we have permitted this in the past. I really don't have.
Is it on the applica- is it on the paperwork for today or?
No, not right now. I wanted to talk to you guys. I wanted to talk to you first before I added it. For to get your, you know, opinions.
I mean, multiple places along Shinnecock Hills and along here have small areas with, you know, like a decking and kayak racks or paddleboard racks so that, you know, you know, stored up up above on top of the bulkhead, so it's not something we we haven't permitted in the past. So I don't really.
So would like a six by sixteen be okay? Just right where that ladder is?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't. I mean, if it's attached to the bulkhead, I we would have no problem with that.
Does that trigger? Does that trigger what Sean was talking about since now it's on the landward side or does it not trigger that?
Yeah, but you got to be able to, there's a ten foot area that they're going to have to dig up and put dead men and lay logs in there.
Right. So that's okay then.
You're definitely going to want to go to planning on this and make sure that they okay this before you start digging.
You're talking for the kayak rack thing or for our bulkhead thing?
Any disturbance on this site should go through planning.
Okay, I'll let her know, but.
I'm saying two thousand and seven, we did permit the batten pilings to be placed in front of the bulkhead. And in back of the bulkhead, we permitted those pavers that you see there that are planted with grass. There was a permit for all of that in our office, just F Y I.
Right. What would what would the bulkhead replacement? You know, what what what's the rationale for that?
Uh, this is the Shinnecock Hills Protected Historical Area, so any site disturbance needs planning for approval. So I need digging essentially.
This isn't.
News to me. This is, yeah, no.
This is not along Shinnecock, north side of Shinnecock Bay.
This is Cormorant.
This is Carmarthen Point between Bay Avenue and Carmarthen Point. It's on the western face, western side of Shinnecock Bay.
I misspoke. It says Cultural Resource Protection Area B, property located in Cultural Resources Protection Overlay District. Do not issue any building permits without planning approval of a site disturbance plan. Is the flag for the site.
That's not a bill. This isn't a building permit, though.
If you're disturbing the site, you could have a code enforcement issue.
I think it's.
All right, so.
It's an inquiry to the.
Yeah, I would make an inquiry, but I.
This is new.
Yeah, it is.
Definitely new. We've done this bulkheads before in this area.
This is, this is new, Regina, this ruling that Sean's referring to, so.
It's in our G I S system. It's a flag on this property.
All right, so we can continue and proceed with what we need to do and then Gina's going to have to make sure she dots her i's and crosses her t's. Because like Sean said, it could be a code enforcement issue, so you don't want to have that.
Yeah.
For the bulkhead replacement and what you're asking, it's the standard along here. It's you're removing the batten piles, you're removing the C C A treated lumber. Or so I mean, it's it's all and it's a good project as far as replacement. It's not any higher. It's in no different, you know, configuration what's presently there, so I would say that's something that's approval, you know, moving forward would be good.
Ed, what do you?
I I agree.
What do you do about pass and repass here? Because there's not really much of a beach at low tide, right?
It it's a beach that completely has disappeared since they placed the bulkheads there in the eighties. So removing the batten piles would give you like four feet more walking area, but it's only achievable at low tide.
Yeah, the bulkheads, like the elevation is just so high, but there is a ladder there.
Yeah, but I mean, for pass and reef, it used to be a sandy beach at high tide. And it's completely changed from, you know, bulkheads being placed there.
So would you determine that this needs to be held over for me to put the deck plan on or can you approve it pending new drawings?
Why don't you come back with the deck plan and everything? That way we have it all together.
Absolutely.
Agreed.
I mean, that's the best way to do it because I don't want to do it piecemeal. You know, we have a new trustee, so I want to make sure that he watches how we do our business to make it easier on everybody.
It's easier on everybody, new, not new, even if you're old.
And I'll check on that planning thing too in the meantime, so I guess hold it over.
Yes, hold this over.
Okay.
Please.
So we could move on then, you guys, well. To the cold spring point and that's you too, Regina.
Um, that would be Jacob.
Yes.
I'm sorry for giggling. We've gone through, so this has been like a year that we've been working on this all together. And Ed, thank you for, you know, following up and calling me and reminding me and seeing what's going on. So we finally found a way to push the float over, reangle the dock. And so everything is all Blue Book compliant as far as the ten foot offset from the hypothetical extended property line in the water.
So I mean, basically, it's a dock that's there, but they want to build it wider and newer and, you know, that way complies to our setbacks. It's all non-treated open great materials, so it's a it's a good project, so.
Yeah, improvement. The one there is so low and it's underwater every time it's high tide and it's hazardous, actually. So, thank you.
Yep, so I, no one has any questions? I'd like to move it forward.
Hey, so we'll advance that one?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Do we need to look at special conditions quickly?
Uh, yes. This is for one sixty cold spring point, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, cool. Um, so obviously you want to do the general permit conditions, then notify the office within twenty four hours and all approvals required. Okay?
Yep.
Um, I'll go back up to the top.
What else said?
It's jumping around. My screen is jumping here. Catwalk must know.
Let me scroll down.
Yes, please.
Is it a seasonal dock?
It should be, it should be a seasonal dock and dock and ramp and float.
Yeah, the ramp and float get pulled. Yes.
Yep.
That's the third one.
Seasonal.
Yeah, limited, yeah, seasonal dock, that one there, and then also two boats. Jumping around again.
That dock's parallel to shore, right?
Yes. No higher than twenty six inches over the plants.
Do you want me to scroll down a little bit more?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Uh, the fixed dock, no higher than twenty six inches over the water. Regina, are the posts going to be flush with the top of the dock? Are they going to stick up?
They're going to stick up. See, there's a railing and the cross section, you know, like the typical rope. Um, low profile, nautical, quaint railing.
Yep.
Yeah.
You could scroll down a little bit when I.
You don't need the dock facility ones up there, so.
No, you could scroll down a little bit more.
Sure.
Um, scroll up.
Scroll up, you said?
No, no.
Down or?
Down, sorry.
Okay, I think that's, is that about it?
I think so.
I think that's it. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want me to stay on for one more or do you want me to step off?
You have one more?
Yeah, Solomon.
Nine Pine Tree Lane, it's on the mine.
Okay, yeah, yep, okay.
Got that, Linnea?
We're going to Mr. Parish now?
We want to jump to that nine pine tree lane in in West Tampa.
That's Bill's.
Okay, sure. Oh.
Parish is.
For Bill Parish. Okay, sure. One second.
That's the second one on mine.
I'll be quick, I promise.
Um, all right, uh, just let me pull up some stuff for you guys real quick. Okay. Um, here's an aerial view too beforehand.
Hey, you want to tell us about this project a little bit?
Um, it's a basic bulkhead reconstruction. You can see the bulkhead in the photographs is pretty severely blowing out to the point where she can't even let her dogs or grandchildren run in the back of the the property sometimes. It has a existing cutout. And they're going to remove that and the bulkhead's just going to run straight across. Um, and then they want to replace the decking that's there in kind.
Why is that decking?
Um, it is. I don't have the CAD file off.
Can you scroll, Linnea?
Want me to zoom in?
I can't read.
Yeah.
Over here.
I usually do the the square footage.
It's probably on the cover sheet too, if you want me to.
It should be on the cover sheet. Yeah, seven by twenty. So the wood platform part that we're cutting out obviously isn't going to be replaced. It's just that one piece of decking that's actually on grade right now.
Okay, and the buffer?
Buffer right now is pretty extensive as far as a existing naturally vegetated buffer. And then that will be replaced in like kind. Most likely start with beach grass, but she wanted to add some more plants because she likes great looks right now.
Good. Glad to hear that.
There's an elevation that you can go eighty eight inches higher, I think you said?
Eight inches, basically, because what usually happens is by the time a wood structure is replaced and it's actually level. We all know that it does tend to go up a little bit higher, so I kind of, you know, bank on six to eight inches of a height increase every time we redo a structure and I like to include that.
Are the properties on both sides focused?
Yes.
The one to the south as well?
Um, yeah, they both are.
Okay.
We were there, Gina. We took a look at it. You know, it's reasonable what you want to do. Kind of measured up eight inches off where you're at now, if it made sense.
Yeah, it's pretty negligible.
Right. We were there on Friday.
Does need to work to be done too, isn't it?
Yes, it's in really bad shape.
Bad shape.
And it's that old C C A, you know, those old timbers.
Be good to get them out of there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other, do you guys want to move on to special conditions for this?
I think this one's good to advance. So I I think the board should consider what special conditions.
Um, let me pull it up for you guys.
It's standard conditions. You're going to maintain pretty much that natural buffer that you have there. You got that in there.
Yeah, she really likes those shrubbery, those bigger plants.
There's a benefit with those plants compared to the beach grass as well for more extensive root systems, right?
Yeah, if you can maintain what you have, that would be fine, you know?
Yep.
You know, like like she like Anne was pointing out, once they already has an established root system there. So obviously you got to come back.
Sometimes we try to stockpile that and then, you know, those root systems still stay in the dirt. And then, you know, when you place it back, there's a hope and the theory is that they'll grow back again.
Right.
Okay. So for the special conditions, bulkheads being reconstructed in vinyl?
Yes.
Clean sand?
Um, yes. Um, yes.
Linnea, can you scroll? Thank you.
I specified very little, only 35 yards. Um, and that's if, that's if it's needed.
What else is there?
Can you scroll down?
Great when James gets back so he can take care of this. Move us along faster, right?
One more meeting.
This is the first for me, so.
Yeah, no worries, Bill. We got you. Scroll down a little bit more, Linnea.
He's doing a great job. Thank you.
And down a little bit more, Linnea. Okay, so general bulkhead conditions. 10-foot setback, right, and... Backfill consists of sand.
The final grade should be a minimum of four inches below wall, right?
That's the standard.
Yep.
And backfill consisting.
Um, all right, anything else?
Um, go down to the bottom where the general conditions are, I think.
I actually just put those in for you already, the notify the office within 24 hours.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there anything else you guys see you might, anything in new bulkhead-ing or, uh, anything else?
Well, it should be good.
Yep.
I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gina.
Let's go back to Ed's, uh, applications.
Hi, stay warm.
Thank you.
So Linnea, 11 Lighthouse, yeah, you're on.
I have it up.
Thank you.
No worries.
Enviro permits. Charles is in enviro permits on? Is anybody on?
Blake Caulfield.
Just a caution, it's 1 o'clock.
He's coming in now.
We have a 3 o'clock too, I just saw, right, with the...
Yes, we got another exact at 3:00 and we got to go to general at 1:00, so we got to watch our time.
Okay. You want to take a look at the, Clay, are you on? Yeah, let's look at the cover sheet, maybe, Linnea.
There it is.
This is the one, we had some questions on the breakwater that, uh, on the south side to 52, in kind in place, 52-foot groin on the south property line. We were going to shorten it up, um, I believe it was to 14 feet. I don't have the plans in front of me here, so I can't.
Clay, do you have the notes that the board wanted you to revise at the last meeting?
Um, I, I, I was working with Ed on this and I don't remember the last meeting on this. I was to shorten it up by 14 feet.
Yes.
The remaining portion of it that said 40 feet.
So, did, did we make those changes?
Yeah, uh, well, I haven't done anything until you tell me it's okay.
You sent me over the revised plans and I said, um, I thought I called you back and said it was good to go, but we need, here, is this it now? Jumping around.
There, there is not much left. Um, I think there's a top board and two files that he put in and two, uh, previous files from the, uh, what he took out. So it's, it's essentially, there's nothing there, actually. You know, it's just, uh, you have a photo with that, what was it?
Yeah, I was, I was out there the other day. This is basically just...
Factor, you know, do anything as to what we're doing now because he just goes down, takes 10 minutes and pulls that stuff out.
You just got to, you just got to remove the two pilings and the wellers that are there so people can get around, pass and repass.
Right, and the ones that are in the water also.
Yes.
To clean it up a little bit.
Thanks.
Um, I have some notes that I'd like to just read from the file from James's notes from November 15th work session. It says, "New cover sheet and plans reduced to 95 feet," I believe it says 95. And then it says CNR with Sean.
Sean?
I don't recall this application. Obviously, it was something James had recommended. Maybe put this one over until we have all the updates that were requested by trustee Warner.
Okay. Eddie?
Well, isn't, isn't this what's on here right now? Install...
These are revised plans from December 9th, that we received December 9th.
Yeah, these are the revised plans from the last meeting. So.
But we don't have a CNR in place?
No, you draft the CNR after the fact for whatever, uh, basically conditions you'd like to follow the property. Uh, that's not very problematic. Uh, it's, I'm not sure what James wanted on the new drawings, uh, that was, you know, was not already included. Um, I believe he's returning to the office pretty shortly, so putting this over. Wanted to work that.
Hold it over until I can talk to James because I haven't had a chance to have a conversation since I received the new plans. I got the new plans. I'll meet, Clay, I'll meet with James and we'll go over and make sure that we got everything that we had asked for, okay?
Okay.
All right.
Do you have anything else on here, Clay?
No, I have nothing else. Thank you.
All right, Clay, thank you. All right, what are we, are we, we're going to continue or do you want to...
Well, let's, 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 let's see if we can't get this thing moved pretty quick because otherwise we're going to really be in a jam here, I think. Uh, you got MH Ocean View LLC?
Yes. Is Jim Walker or somebody from Innoscience on?
He was on earlier, but I don't think they're on now.
Doesn't look like it.
All right, so let's, let's, you want to wait till you have him, you want to...
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, that's all reason. I, I mean, I got all the information, but I want to have him go over with the whole board.
So, so let's hold, hold that for now. Let's go over to Ann Welker's Project 287.
Okay, um, 287, uh, Project 287 LLC, 4585 Noack Road. This is actually a renewal. Um, and, uh, there were just a couple things that needed to be, uh, a little research needed to be done because, um, this is a remnant run at the top of Sag Harbor Cove in Ligonni Brook, and we want to make sure that there was, uh, adequate protection of the L lives and, um, we have, after reviewing this, we have, uh, a certain that there is, so I'm fine with renewals. If anybody else wants to weigh in, Ed, if you wanted to weigh.
It's, it's a dredged, it's a dredged, uh, end of the canal there. It's deep and wide. Uh, putting a dock or any work in it really is not going to affect the, uh, LY run. I mean, they run in there in March and pretty much are by by, well by by most of the time the boats and dock will be establishing there, so it's really not going to have any, uh, effect on that particular run of Lys that go up to Ligonni Brook.
This is a renewal, correct?
It is.
Yes.
All right, so let's, let's advance to renewal.
It's, it's good to advance, yes.
Yes.
And we'll use the special conditions from the previous permit.
Yes, yes.
Excellent.
Yep, thank you.
Let's go over to trustee Parish. He's got Joy Fishman.
At 46 Basket Neck Lane.
JMO is Glenn Just, who's representing JMO?
Glenn Just, it says on here.
Doesn't look like he's on.
Yeah, I don't think so, unless it's J, uh, G D.
Glenn, Glenn Just here to speak for this application. You want to scroll to the, uh...
There's, he's not on as far as I can see.
I don't know.
You want to scroll to the, uh, cover sheet?
Sure.
Ed, Bill, you want to read that?
Yeah, this one was an applicant. Applicant proposes to reconstruct in place and up to 18 inches higher in elevation, approximately 178 feet of timber bulkhead with Navy-style vinyl sheathing, uh, to dredge a 5-foot-by-174-foot area immediately seaward of the reconstructed bulkhead, uh, to a depth of 2 feet, uh, MLW. The resultant spoil, which is approximately 25 cubic yards of sand, will be used as backfill for the reconstructed bulkhead. And then to construct a 4-foot-by-174-foot timber boardwalk immediately landward of the reconstructed bulkhead. And then it has to, uh, plant beech grass and/or Spartina patents 12 inches on center, a minimum of 10 feet landward of the reconstructed bulkhead and all construction disturbed areas within 25 feet landward of the reconstructed bulkhead. No t, no treated timber to be used. This was the one that you and I went to and, uh, the, we had a question as to the 18-inch elevation as to both sides.
Right, we, right, we clearly, it's a case where we need the applicant's agent to explain and, and, and get more into detail relative to what this is because upon site, uh, visit, you know, you could understand the rationale sort of on one side of the property, but not so much on the other side of the property of how this is going to transition and work. So without Mr. Just here to be addressing the board, I think on these points, I, I think this has to be on hold for the board to act, to get proper, um, information to help him make a, a, a good application and a good decision here.
Okay.
All right, you agree? Trustee Parish?
I do.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's hold that and see when we can get Mr. Just to, uh, come in and, and work with the board on this.
The next one is a, uh, 375 Dune Road in West Hampton.
I don't see Landus.
I, I see Dan Hall, he's the man of the hour.
Oh, great.
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Sorry, Dan.
That's okay, that's fine. Yeah, this project is, um, a proposed walkway over the dune. It's in the Village of West Hampton Beach. It's a 4-foot-by-205-foot open great walkway. And the DEC had asked that it be elevated 3 feet over grade, so, um, that, that's what we proposed to do. And that, that, at the seaward end, it actually ends landward of the existing snow fences there and there's, uh, proposed stairs. And then there's, um, you know, a acreade, a sand walk to the beach.
It's another case trustee Parish and myself went to, right? Trustee Parish?
That's correct. We climbed up those icy stairs.
Correct.
Is all of this area within trustee jurisdiction that the walkway is being asked for?
We generally do take jurisdiction over these, these beach walkovers, uh, when they come to us and, you know, and obviously we want to use non-treated material as indicated in the, uh, in the application. In addition, you know, generally the concerns are that, uh, the railings, we want to go with, you know, min, minimal acceptable railings, which is why, you know, we're protecting what we're protecting, Ann. So, I, you know, I think that, and this is trustee Parish's area, so I, you know, I want him to jump in here. That's what, you know, generally our concerns have been, uh, the compliant materials for the environment and the, um, the handrails that are the least invasive, uh, to the view sheds and to the, you know, rest of the, uh, you know, nature that surrounds. So, I, you know.
Hey, Scott?
Hey, Bill.
Um, can we see the, the, the plans, the, the side profile of this?
Sure.
Please. How high off the ground is this?
3 feet.
3 feet, yeah. They can't lower it at all? Because if they lower it... We originally, originally had it a lot lower. And the DEC, uh, came back and said, uh, they preferred to be 3 feet, so. That's where we're at, because the village actually, their code's lower, except for if required by the New York State DEC, then they allow it to be higher, which is, which is against here. Yeah, because if they go lower right off, right over the, um, beech grass, the grass actually goes, uh, go through it, you won't need handrails and you'll, you'll blend right in. We, we get other permits, we, they, they gave other permits to people with a lower.
There was a mixture in the area, Bill. We did note that, you know, when you look left and right, there was a mixture of lower and some that were similar heights over there, and we did also...
Yeah, the higher ones are usually the old ones, the new ones are the lower ones.
They, they looked the other way around there and we were there, the, and we did make note of the fact that they did have, um, kind of minimalized, you know, handrails, so.
There's also a combination of some elevated walkway and some natural path. Is there any possibility that there could be a reduction in the extent of that catwalk, so it's not 200 feet long, or is that not...
That, that's what they did at the, at the seaward end, they stopped it. And then they have a natural path going from, uh, around the 14-foot contour, 14, 15-foot contour to, um, that, I guess, uh, past the snow fence to, um, the edge of the, what would be considered the dune, because this... They're trying to minimize, you know, walking on the dune, uh, because eventually over time it's going to...
No, no, of course.
It's not going to grow and you're going to get...
I, I think based on where this is and when you look to the left and to the right, I, I, I don't think it's a terrible project and, and they, they should obviously use, you know, the appropriate non-pressure treated material. They also should, as a special condition, perhaps put their, the, the number of the address perhaps on the end of the stairway, that way in the event of an emergency, eh, from a beach side, you can make a determination where you're at. Could be helpful. Uh, I would say that should be a simple special condition in here, but in terms of what you're asking to do, I don't, I don't see a, I don't see a problem with it. You know, I don't know what the other board members think.
Yeah, that's, that's not a problem, having a special condition with the number on it. That's probably a great idea.
Eddie, you got any suggestion? Eddie, anything? You're, you're, you're muted, Ed. What are you telling jokes over there?
No, we, during Sandy, before Sandy, we had beach markers put all, up and down all beach. And after Sandy, they got blown out, remember?
All right.
So it's a good idea, Scott.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yep.
Trustee Parish?
Yes, sounds like a good idea.
Trustee Pal?
It's a good idea.
Trustee Ann Welker?
What do we need for special conditions?
Okay, moving on to special conditions. Well, let's see.
Can you zoom in for you guys?
I need, I need more powerful glasses.
There you go.
Thanks, Linnea.
No worries.
Your screen around, Scott.
Hang on, the first.
Concrete bridge. Let's build, just build a concrete bridge.
So there's nothing on that sheet?
No.
Think you want it.
Keep going.
Keep going down?
Yeah.
No, keep going, Linnea.
Right.
I'm going to keep going to, we're going to go down to walkways, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Is this where you want the, um, emergency, the in case of emergency, like the number on the end of the wall?
Yeah, I would just indicate, you know. Check other.
Street address.
Street address listed on, uh, stairs at, uh, seaward end.
And then, this is not light penetrating, right? You guys, it, it's wood, so do we have to do the 3-inch spacing?
Yeah, you could do that.
Yes.
Because that allows for beech grass to rupture, I mean, whatever.
You could do that.
It is a, um, proposed open great walkway.
It is.
Oh, it is?
It has to be.
Yeah, so check the other one. Yeah, check the other.
Okay. Sorry, Linnea.
But so get the other one off, unclick the top one there.
Sure.
There you go.
Because it's a light penetrating, okay.
Yeah.
Anything else? Do you want any other special conditions on here or no?
I don't, I don't think so. We just, what about the rails?
Do you say handrails?
What, what do you got on here, uh?
Just check that box, Linnea, that says other.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thanks.
I think this has...
Do, is there a handrail, um... Do, is there a handrail um, side shot? In description?
On the plans?
On the, anywhere on there.
A cross section, Scott?
Yeah, cross section, so we, so we don't see these spindles that are, you know.
I think it only showed the top reel, Scott.
Okay, so any handrails, there'll be minimum specifications, allow for safety standards, I would check that one.
Yeah.
That one in the middle, Lenaya?
This one?
Yep.
Cool.
Then we're good, right?
Yeah.
Hey, so when I close the special conditions for three seventy-five Dune Road.
Thank you.
No worries.
Can we circle, can we circle back? Oh, you still, sorry, Dan.
No, thank you everyone, have a great afternoon.
You wanna circle back to Ocean View, uh, thirty Ocean View Drive, see if Jim Walker's arms, I contacted him.
Okay, we still, we still have one more of Bill Parish.
Tommy Rosenfeld forty-four.
Let Bill go first then.
Get Bill done, let's get, then we'll get yours done, then we gotta go into general.
Yep.
Charles, can you let Ben in from C-Tech? Please.
Come in.
Thank you. Bill, Bill, if you have the, Bill Parish, if you have the cover sheet, you could start to read that while uh.
Sure, it's a, to remove and replace, for forty-four A basket neck lane. To remove and replace two hundred and fifteen linear feet of Navy style bolted in place or landward of existing. Remove and replace eight feet, eight foot wide wood boardwalk. Backfill with three hundred and sixty cubic yards of clean fill from an approved land source. And then remove remnants of existing wood pier and install four foot by a hundred foot wood pier. Three foot by eighteen foot aluminum ramp and the six foot by twenty foot wood floating dock.
Oops, Helen, Lenaya, could you go back to the cover sheet?
Sure.
For one sec, so. This, remove and replace eight foot wide wood boardwalk. That's not what we've been doing, I know that's what's there now. But that's an extensive boardwalk, that's over two hundred feet long by eight feet wide.
Alright, can you hear me?
Yes.
How you doing? Hi, yeah, you know, I've spoken to the uh, the owner extensively, I think he's on the call, I don't know. If you can let Mr. Rosenfeld state his case. But, you know, it's basically that when he purchased this house, that boardwalk was a major asset for him. And he's not asking to extend it or increase it, but to lose it would really harm his property values. Uh, he, he's willing to make other concessions i- if you can come to any agreement, but he really. He's really gonna do everything he can to try to maintain that eight foot walk, I mean. We're not changing it in elevation, we, we're not asking to lengthen it, we'll use whatever material or decking you want, but. Uh, it's just something that he's really dear to his heart and he, you know, it's a major part of his property value that he really doesn't want to lose. I'm, I'm hoping you can come together to reconsider just letting him keep what's there.
Do you have an always, overhead shot of this, please?
Sure.
Thank you. You can zoom in, so you can, so everyone can see the um, boardwalk they're talking about.
Lenaya, I don't.
Not the right property?
It's forty-four A basket neck.
The other one.
So it's right here?
It's the one to the, to the, yeah.
Down where you have the arrow.
That one.
Yeah, that's one.
So that's. There you can see the boardwalk that clearly goes from one end of the property to the other, it is, that, this um. This application came in two years ago when this was my area, that's why I'm a bit familiar with it, there, there has been, I think that. Bulkhead is wooden, um, so would be good if it was replaced, but there is a significant, I think. Um, there has been significant damage to the boardwalk um, over time and with flooding.
There are some pictures, and if you can get it to, you can see.
Actually, it's actually gotten a lot worse since, since this application started probably a year and a half ago. Um, it's hazardous, I think we have a contractor on site, they're ready to start as soon as we can get some sort of approval, I know.
You have a crane on the side already.
Yeah, we, you know, we don't want to jump the gun, but he is concerned especially with um, has some young grandchildren and stuff and it's just very hazardous. In that area. So, so we, we do have the state and Department of State, Department of Mental Conservation and Army Corps approval. Um, to maintain. The bulkhead and the, the boardwalk hopefully, and we also have a hundred foot pier with a ramp and a float. Um, that we are hoping could be approved also, the. The DEC and the Army were very specific as to where we could locate those structures because of the water depth. So there's really not much wiggle room to move things around. Um, so we are respectfully, almost begging to approve this project as submitted. So that the contractor can start work as soon as possible. I think the finished project will be greatly enhanced to what we have now, uh, I think it'll be a great look for the area. And, you know.
And you are aware that all, all materials are all non-pressure treated materials, right?
Yes, sir, I think that's stated in the drawings, but the contractor uh, does work in your area a lot, he's familiar with the material requirements. Um, I think he's on the call too.
It is stated in the plans as well.
Right.
It would be, in my opinion, I mean, this is um. This is something that uh. We need to look at, um, because I think either if we were to shrink the width of the boardwalk. Or the length of it, that would make this more tenable, in my opinion.
Alright, but what, what harm is it gonna do, Anne, I mean, if he does this, if he replaces it with compliant material? What harm will that do?
Well, my question, my question is, on the other end, on the other side, what benefit? Is it do, is this lending to the environment, there's, there's no mitigation of uh. Nutrients that are pouring into the bay with having this wide boardwalk, there are no roots that are absorbing anything. Um, I mean, there's not even planting proposed for the two feet within our jurisdiction.
But he's, but this is not a case where he's asking to do anything other than maintain the property that he already has. He's not asking for relief to, you know, to, you know, to do anything in addition to what he's already got.
I think you both asking.
Yeah, I, could I just point out, we're actually losing some property on the, I believe it's the west end, we're, we're bringing the bulkhead back. Onto the property line, so he is making a concession to, you know, quite a significant chunk of laying there, if you see the uh. Off to the left, we're, we're bringing the bulkhead back to the property line, so that's gonna move in five feet. He's losing property already, he really doesn't want to lose the boardwalk, I, I know he has the utmost respect for your entire panel and everything you guys do. He, that's why he loves the Hamptons, he loves the environment, he loves that you guys work so hard to take care of it, but. He really wants that boardwalk and, you know.
I have a question for you. I, 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 I agree with Anne, okay, on this, that um, the boardwalk is very excessive. If, if I decide for my vote to let, to have that, then he has to have a um. Some type of um. Green belt, not green belt, but um, plantings behind the boardwalk. A buffer, a nice big buffer, okay, right, the overhead shot, if you go back to the overhead shot. There's, there's no buffer, it's all grass, so if he's, wants to keep that eight feet buffer, I mean, eight p, eight feet. On boardwalk, let him put a ten foot buffer behind it.
Um, what would you want the buffer to be, just uh, non-fertilized plants?
Yeah, like native.
American beech grass.
Native vegetation, that's non-fertilized, non-mowed and would be irrigated only for the first two years.
Yes, we'd be willing to accept it, absolutely.
Anne, would that make you happy?
That would be, that would make a difference.
But would it make you happy?
Well, the, no, but it would, it would help with moving this forward, for sure, it, it just, it, it uh.
But look, you, you get into, you get into, look, you, you get into these situations where you want to work with people on maintaining their property and you want to. Work within the confines of blue book regulations and people's property rights, so if you're willing to come to the table. To provide litigation for the sheet runoff coming off of your lawn, that's reasonable for you to do, especially. With a homeowner that cares about the waterway where his house is. Mm-hmm, right?
Certainly sounds like a fair compromise, I, you know, I don't even have to check in with Mr. Uh, Ro- Rosenfield, I, I, I'm sure he'd agree to that. He just, will do anything to maintain that boardwalk, I know.
Hey Sean, what about, what about the fact that um, only two feet of that is within our jurisdiction?
You know, if you put it on a condition uh, in the permit, and we agreed to it, I don't know if it's a jurisdictional issue, I'm just. Trying to help you here.
Well, you're probably gonna need an environmental wetlands permit to go upland of that. Um, so you can certainly consult with them and if you wanted to make that buffer a little larger. Do that, um.
Right.
So that's what he's gonna do, Sean, make the buffer, two feet into us, then eight feet into the upland, so. They used to be happy about making the buffer.
But that's gonna further come, come, uh, you know, complicate his process, he's got a crane. And a contractor that's there now, so what, how does that?
Well, I, I think this is a new construction, correct?
No.
No.
It's just doing maintenance.
Just doing maintenance, I don't think it'd affect the, Sean.
No, I mean the upland.
Yeah, even on upland, because it's a win for them, they're put, he's putting a buffer.
What do you mean, what do he have to, what do he have to?
Uh, I'm saying, are there open permits from other town divisions on this currently?
Um. I can check for you.
Not town, no, not town, but I do have a twenty foot limited backfill on the DEC, the Army and the. Department of State permits, so.
No, Sean, you mean the house, right?
Yes.
Ben, that, that house is existing, that's not new construction, right?
There, there, okay, is that?
Correct, everything you see there is there now.
The green right there.
Yeah, we're not changing any of that, it's just a bulkhead project, we're coming in by sea.
Wha- what's the big green patch though, is that a sports court or a pool?
No, it's a pool.
That's an in-ground pool.
Cause it looks like you may have a barrier issue, you have to maintain a pool barrier, so you may need a fence permit anyway, building department, so. I'd suggest you go in and consult with them at building department. I, I don't see them stopping you from planting a, a vegetation buffer by any means, but they certainly are gonna have you. Um, enclose that pool, alright?
Sure, that's not a problem.
The, the property line may be fenced, Sean? I'm not sure.
It is, we have fences down both properties.
And the, and on the side yards as well, I think that was how it was protected, but y- you're right, Sean, I. I'm not as familiar with those regulations.
Yeah, go into the building department, you should be able to take care of both issues at the same time. Um, I, I don't think, like I said, they generally are looking to prevent fertilized grass running around to a bulkhead. I don't think they'll give you an issue with planting.
Okay, um, I'm actually two hours away, I don't usually take on work out here, guys, I know it's a lot involved, but uh. You know, we do have a crane on site, is there any way we can get approval for the bulkhead work at least? Um, under an emergency approval.
Why can't we approve the whole thing and then just put the buffer in there? And then if he's gotta go to whoever he's gotta go to, because he wants to plant native vegetation on his property, I, I don't see where that's an issue. He's maintaining what he's got, I believe it is in conformity to blue book regulations, Sean.
Well, realistically too, you're not gonna be doing this planting while you have a machine working on this trustee project, uh, that's gonna be coming after the fact.
Right?
Right.
So, you know. Take what you can with this permit.
We'll take it.
Um, and then make sure the environmental division is on board.
Perfect, let me ask trustee parish, it's his area, he was there doing due diligence, what his thoughts are on this?
I think the work really needs to be done, uh, it's in bad condition right now and I think that the. Seeing that he's agreed to do the buffer later time, I think that's a good idea to let him go.
Let him go.
Put that in, put that in on the um, special condition, that's the eight feet.
Yeah.
So it sounds like we're advancing with updated cover sheet plans to reflect the planting. Correct?
Yeah. Yeah.
We haven't even talked about.
Special condition?
What, what, we haven't talked about what, Edward?
The dock, isn't there a dock and a ramp and a float?
Yeah, we gotta go back into that, exactly, we, we, we got hung up on his uh, walkway. Let's take a look at the.
Do you guys wanna start the other Zoom, because there's people waiting, right?
Yeah, I got you.
One o'clock?
Is this the last one that we have? This is the last one we have, let's finish this up. Is this, is his hundred foot, uh, and this was your area, does his hundred foot pier uh, conform to the blue book regulations?
Yes. I just need to see the um, amount of water there, but I think it's fine.
Uh, I think there might be a hydro grout, oh no, sorry, here you go.
Alright, those are soundings in parentheses.
Um, so it's twenty, twenty-six inches at the inside?
Right.
Twenty-four inches.
Twenty-four inches and.
Ramp and a float.
Uh, we agreed to chalk, we agreed to chalk the float that was required for the other agencies also. Um, and they did approve it because these structures were existing, we're replacing in kind and in place. Uh, the previously stormed damaged structures, sorry. So, our intention is to put back exactly what is there prior to super storms.
How are you gonna chalk, do you have a diagram showing the chalking?
Should be show, this is a rough sketch on the uh, if you see there, pier crossfield, it's squall up a little bit. I show some shocks there at two and a half feet above the bottom, um. To make sure that float never comes within two and a half feet to the bottom of the bay.
Did you mean a description of the chalks, Ed?
I'm just wondering, is it gonna be a six by six or a four by four, what's gonna hold it from uh, going past the chocks? I mean, it looks like this is too uh, you know, we have asked like a six by six to be suspended underneath the float. Or something like, something more substantial.
Okay.
Because, yeah, Ed's right, cause um, we are, in the past, we had to have trouble with these, when there's only a one shock on each pole, if pole gets bent. Or they fall off, the, the floor will be crooked and someone will get hurt.
Sure, we could definitely chalk it however you want, a six by six going across both sets of piles, not be a problem.
That would be the most appropriate way to do it.
You, you might wanna investigate, um, there are a couple new ways of chalking too, like when you're looking at.
Yeah, like, like I said, the contractor works a lot in that area, I'm sure he'll be more familiar with how it's done.
Is this a seasonal dock, you guys? Cause it ice, does it ice there or is it?
He'll, he probably will take it out, um, if there's a contractor in the area to do it, a lot of times that's the problem, but if, if he can take it out or at least suspend it. Higher for the, for the winter.
It'll just get beaten up there by a storm, so my, my recommendation would make it a seasonal float and a, a ramp.
Okay, yeah, just, just a float. Who's the contractor?
Uh, it's Greg Isaacson, he's a, he's a young guy, he's very young and uh, very ambitious, he's taken a lot, a lot of work out there in Suffolk County.
Is that the name of his company?
GD Isaacson Construction Inc.
Yep.
Out of East Patchogue.
Alright.
Okay, boy, where are you at?
Special conditions.
Okay, so we're gonna advance, go to the special condition sheet.
Just pulling it up, here you go.
And then we're gonna get, fight it to the other meeting.
Hey Scott, we're gonna need an update plan for the um, shocks, to make sure he does it.
Drawings. Drawings.
Detailed drawings?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That way, when whoever has to go down and inspect it, the harbor troll or a new code enforcement person or. A trustee, we know what we're looking at.
Okay, so. You got that there, Ben?
Can I email those plans to?
Yeah, I'm dropping my, I think you have my email, but I'm dropping it in the box, in the chat.
Alright, thank you, Jessica.
Go through the special conditions and also list that in other, okay? Bill?
Yep.
Yeah.
So special conditions, bulkhead replaced, refacing, so no change in height?
No.
Clean sand, clean sand only?
Yes.
So clean sand only?
Vinyl? Now there's no, no change in height too.
Okay.
And keep it the same elevation?
Yep.
And said reconstructed in vinyl?
Yes.
Okay.
And then scroll down. Uh, it's the dock.
Seasonal dock must be removed. There you go.
That's it for that one?
Limited to boats. Limited to boats.
Limited to boats.
The docks parallel to shore and that too. Uh, go up, yeah, right under, yep.
Um, any of these?
What about pass and repass there? No, right?
No, you can walk underneath that dock.
Okay.
Sound a dock facility, um.
No.
No. Any general bulkhead conditions? For the ten foot setback? The vegetation?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep. Ed, final grade?
Yes.
Four, four inches.
Inches below, yep.
Backfill.
Backfill, you said?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Um, notify office within twenty-four hours, all approvals required.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, new bulk cutting, any? Trustees accept no liability for damage?
And pass in, it must be maintained a passing way.
Okay. Anything for walkways?
That walkway's gonna be wood.
The three inch, three eighth spacing between the boards.
Between boards. Okay.
And no fertilizers.
Fertilizers.
He, he could, he could do a, um, he could do a, um. Hey Ed, he might be better off doing the open grading, so if, when it overwashes, the water goes right through it quick.
Yeah.
Come on, you're not gonna like that, please.
I, 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 I think, I, I, that, I don't think that's, I think it's overkillin' it, quite frankly, guys, I really don't. Uh, I think if you go to other, indicate the chalking. Yeah, put the wording on there for the, for the timber size of chalking.
Can you say it one more time for me? I'm sorry.
Floating dock must be chalked by a six by six timber on both pilings.
Going across, attached to both poles.
Chock doesn't like, like pavement.
No, C-H-O-C-K-E-D. There you go.
Okay. Floating dock must be chalked, I'm sorry, you guys are talking over each other.
What else should it say, you guys? Floating dock, dock must be chucked.
With a six by six going from pole to pole.
What was the pole? I'm sorry, Bill.
Going from one pole to the other pole.
Going from one pole to another pole?
Yes.
Better get used to that.
Inches?
Six feet or six inches?
Six inches. Six by six, six inches by six inches, yes.
One pole to the other pole.
Yes.
And should it additionally state in the special conditions about the eight foot additional buffer?
Yes.
So, um. What's the language?
Additional eight foot native vegetative buffer agreed to by applicant's agent.
Perfect, thanks Scott.
Yes?
Additionally, eight percent setback. Agreed to by applicant's agent.
To be no mow, no fertilize and.
Sorry, can you say it again? We have the no fertilizers used already checked off.
We checked that off already.
I know, but I just wanna make sure it's with this as well. Does it have to be? Scott.
No fertilizers to be used?
Yeah. That's great.
Alright. We, this guy's got more conditions than, uh, there are M and Ms in the, in the bag here, um. Alright, we, are we good to, uh? To, to adjourn this work session now, folks, cause we have a general session to jump into.
Make a most, pose this work session?
Uh, second it, all in favor?
Bye.
Hi.
See you guys in five minutes.
Alright.
Thanks, Charles.